I want to call this meeting to order. Tonight's Planning Commission meeting, it's Thursday, January 23rd at 6:30. Can we have a roll call, please?
Commissioner Barrera.
Here.
Commissioner Donaldson.
Here.
Commissioner Keller.
Here.
Commissioner Sohane.
Here.
Commissioner Young has an excused absence this evening. Vice Chair Thompson.
Here.
And Chair Guerrero.
Here.
So we have a quorum of six commissioners present.
Great, thanks Charlie. So at this point, want to open up the floor for any public comment, for items that are not on tonight's agenda. All right, see none, moving on. With the approval of action minutes, for this, for tonight, we have two separate approvals, one for October 24th, 2019.
May I just make a comment on this before you proceed? We didn't, the commission did not approve the minutes of October 24th at your last meeting because we did not have a sufficient number of commissioners present. There were four commissioners present at the October 24th meeting, and that was Commissioner Barrera, Commissioner Keller, Commissioner Sohane, and Commissioner Young. And the four of those then were not present on December 12th, so we couldn't do the minutes at that meeting. Unfortunately, the, all four of those are not present tonight either, and after this evening, we will not have Commissioner Barrera anymore, so we will never be able to approve these minutes. However, I have been advised that Chair Guerrero, who was homesick on October 24th, was actually spending his time watching the commission meeting. And therefore, he is eligible to vote on these minutes. So with that introduction, you may proceed with approval of these minutes.
Thanks Charlie. Are there any additions or changes that anyone would like to make to the meeting notes? Oh, all right. So do we have approval here for?
I make a motion to approve.
I'll second that.
Excellent. So moved by Commissioner Keller, seconded by Commissioner Barrera.
And is that without exception of those who are eligible? So we will note that that is Commissioners Barrera, Keller, Sohane, and Chair Guerrero voting aye, and the rest of you either abstain or absent.
Great, moving along, we have the meeting action minutes for Thursday, December 12th. And for this one here, do we have a similar circumstance, Charlie?
Well, Commissioner Barrera was absent from that, and Commissioner Young is absent tonight, but the other five of you were at the December 12th meeting and would be eligible to approve these minutes.
So I'll make a motion to approve.
All right. Moved by Vice Chair Thompson.
I'll second.
Seconded by Commissioner Donaldson.
That also without exception?
Without exception.
So we will note that as five to zero with the others excused or abstaining.
All right. So at this point, we have the Community Development Director's report.
Thank you, Chair Guerrero. First, with regard to recent city council actions, they have had two meetings since your last meeting on December 12th, and their two meetings were on December 17th and January 21st, just two days ago. On December 17th, the council held a study session on legislation from 2019, state and federal, the state and federal legislative agenda, and also the proposed 2020 state and federal legislative and funding agenda, and they provided direction on areas of interest to them for follow-up. On January 21st, they also held a study session on legislation. This related to house, specifically to housing legislation that was passed in 2019. There was quite a bit of it, and the council received a presentation and discussed it. Several of these new laws will require amendments to the planning regulations, and those will obviously be presented to the commission for your recommendation before they go to the council in the upcoming months. The council held a study session on the 47th Street Homes Project. As you may recall, this is a proposal to demolish four existing houses and replace them with six duplex units on 47th Street. The commission held a study session on this at your October 24th meeting. A number of neighbors spoke, and the council expressed the view that there was not sufficient evidence in the record to support the findings required for demolition of the homes. And on the Marketplace Parcel B Appeal, the city council reviewed the supplemental report that was rendered by the commission at your December 12th meeting, and they then voted unanimously to approve the project with findings and modifications to the conditions of approval as identified by the commission, plus a few additional clarifying non-substantive modifications to the conditions that were requested by the appellant. So that project is finally done, we think. We hope. Fingers crossed. In other news, construction has finally begun on the long-awaited South Bayfront Pedestrian Bicycle Bridge. Pile driving is expected to begin tomorrow, and the project should be finished by the end of the year. There will be a tenant and landlord just cause eviction ordinance workshop on Wednesday, next Wednesday, January 29th, from 4:00 to 7:00 p.m. at ECCL. This is sponsored by the Economic Development and Housing Division, and Echo Housing, the city's consultant for tenant landlord relations, will be there to answer questions. And finally, I just want to note that some of you have just heard that tonight is Commissioner Barrera's last meeting, and I just want to say we're very sad about that, and staff will greatly miss her and her leadership and expertise over these last several years. And I just want to confirm that she will be able to be here at the beginning of your next meeting in February to be properly roasted by the commission.
Thank you, Charlie. I'm also very sad about it.
And you'll be here next meeting.
I will be here next meeting, yes.
Okay, good. And that concludes my report. I'd be happy to respond to any questions.
Thank you, Charlie. Do we have any questions from the commissioners? All right, see none. We'll move on to item number six. This is the Disposal of Conflicts of Interest and Ex parte Communications.
I have, I met with the applicants of the Hilton Garden Inn Appeal, or the Appellants, I guess I should say.
I also met with the union rep from the appellant for item 8.1, as well as a brief meeting in 2019 with the applicant for the Ohana Cannabis Retail Dispensary in 7.1. All right, and that's it, Charlie?
Okay, thank you.
All right, so at this point, we have two study sessions. 7.1, this is the study session for Ohana Cannabis Retail Dispensary and Restaurant. We have Maru here. Great. Hello.
Good evening, Planning Commissioners, Happy New Year. And we are appropriately starting the new year with cannabis-related item. All right, so a bit of a background. As you know, in April 2017, the city legalized cannabis and allowed cannabis retail sales as well as cannabis manufacturing. And it allowed in specifically retail dispensaries of cannabis sales with a major use permit in the following three locations. In addition to that, they also imposed a 250-foot buffer from any, from sites which are considered sensitive receptors, so that would include, that what included were parks, religious institutions, elementary or secondary schools, and daycare facilities. Then why on RFP selection process, the council selected Ohana. Ohana was previously known as East Bay Therapeutics, or EBT, and EBT was one of the two applicants selected to apply for the use permit for cannabis sales. The commission approved EBT's major use permit in April of 2018 at 5745 Pelidue Street. The applicant then later obtained its operator's permit from the police department in May, and then opened its doors for business in July of 2018. Subsequently, the commission also approved an amendment to the use permit in September of 2018 to allow onsite consumption. Since then, our staff has not received any complaints on the operation of EBT, and its operator's permit was renewed in 2019. Operator's permit, as you may recall, is issued by the police department, and they need to be renewed annually. And for 2020, I suppose it will be coming in, when we're, in May, when they will apply for the operator's renewal. So in terms of where they are located, this is Ohana, the existing site of the dispensary. It's called Ohana now. I'm calling it EBT because the permits, the use permits that were issued were under EBT. And I'm just identifying the location of Broken Rack, which is essentially across the street. So currently, Ohana, EBT operates out of the 5,000-square-foot tenant space in an existing much larger 63,000-square-foot building on Pelidue Street. And in terms of uses at this site, you have onsite retail sale of cannabis products, onsite pickup, onsite consumption, as well as home deliveries that occur from this location. These are the hours of operation. Now, the proposal is to relocate the existing dispensary across the street at the site of the Broken Rack. The Broken Rack apparently is open for sale. I'm not sure whether it has been purchased or not, but it will not be functioning as a billiards and restaurant anymore. And therefore, the idea is to relocate it at this location. It is about a 10,000-square-foot area, and the proposal is that half of it would be used by the dispensary, and the other half would remain a restaurant. So this is the site plan. So this is the, this is where the existing dispensary is, and they want to relocate to, across the street to Broken Rack. Zooming in, in terms of how the space would be distributed, essentially, you know, they will be making changes to allow complete separation of the dispensary with the restaurant. Now, the details of this will be further fleshed out, but the main question before you today, and the reason we are having the study session, is within our existing regulations, this location does not work unless certain rules are amended. So let's look at why this is not possible. Like I said, this would need a conditional use permit for, to relocate, and the findings for the CUP are pretty straightforward in terms of consistency with the general plan. That's not an issue in terms of compatibility with the surrounding area. That too is not an issue for the relocation. In terms of being able to, infrastructure services being provided, that is also something that can easily be made. And in terms of whether it contributes to the general well-being of the neighborhood and the community, it's the same use and the same set of uses, so that is also not an issue. The issue is the last finding. The proposed use complies with all applicable standards and requirements of these planning regulations. Now, what it does not comply with is its location adjacent to the greenway. The buffer requirements are 250 feet from sensitive uses such as parks, and which include greenways. So this is the existing map where the areas in yellow are the areas where retail dispensaries may be located. So this includes both, it takes into account the zoning areas where retail sales may be allowed, as well as, as well as the buffer zones from various sensitive uses. So in order for this project to move forward, one option is to grant a variance. Now, in order to grant a variance, the following findings need to be made. One is consistency with the general plan, which by itself is not an issue. However, the second finding is related to whether, whether there are any special circumstances at this site, and this is particularly with the shape or topography of the parcel. And the idea is that a strict application of a planning regulation would, would not be, would not be, would not be, let me try this again. The strict application of these regulations may deprive the property owner of privileges enjoyed by owners of the other property in the vicinity. So the idea is, basically, if you have a site which has a peculiar shape, then a setback, a strict application of setback standards may not quite work. Or if it's a site where there is, it's on a slope, then how the height is measured may not quite work. So it's in those kind of situations that the variance findings, or the variance, the use of variance is conceived to be. The third, and the third variance is related to whether this would constitute a special privilege to the recipient, and, which would not be allowed by property owners in the same zoning district or in the vicinity. So this is, again, something that is a very difficult finding to make. Then last is that the granting of the variance is not materially detrimental to the public health, safety, and welfare, and would not impact adequate supply of light and air. And the last one is that the conditions upon which the variance is based would not be applicable generally to the other property in the same zoning district. Staff believes that these findings cannot be made for this proposal, and will not forward an application recommending approval for such a variance to the commission. In this situation, how can this proposal be moved forward? One option is for the commission to consider recommending to the council to make changes to the buffer requirements. So let's talk about the buffer requirements for a little bit. So let's start with the state requirements. So the state does not regulate cannabis businesses in any particular jurisdictions. It gives the localities a right to either legalize or not legalize, and they also do not regulate how businesses are approved at the local level. So, you know, some jurisdictions may have a use permit but not an operator's permit, so these kind of permitting is left at the local level. The state also does not regulate where the businesses may locate, how close they locate to sensitive uses, what constitutes sensitive uses, and how many can locate in a city. All these issues are left for the city to decide. The state's recommendation in the past has been 600 feet from various sensitive receptors such as schools, recreation centers, and daycare centers. It does not include parks as a sensitive use. Emeryville's buffer requirement is 250 feet from sensitive receptors, which is substantially lower than 600 feet recommended by the state. And the reason we did this was because of the size of the city. If we put a 600-foot buffer on various sensitive receptors, then there would not be that many locations left for potential cannabis dispensaries to locate. So to look at what the other cities have done. So going back to Emeryville, we have the lowest buffer with regards to parks, which is 200 feet. And then we, in addition to parks, we consider schools, daycare facilities, and religious institutions as sensitive receptors or users as well. In this table, you can see that the only city, cities that do not have a buffer from the park is San Francisco and Berkeley. I will point out that in your staff report, the information on Berkeley was omitted for, you know, for mysterious reasons. It was omitted because, as a typo. But to, to kind of emphasize that Berkeley does not have any buffer regarding parks, and they do have 600 feet from schools and other cannabis retailers. Berkeley City Council is going to be considering certain amendments to their cannabis regulations next Tuesday, and among them is buffers as well. And the staff recommendation regarding the buffer is, does not, does not include parks. It includes some other things such as recreation centers. So that's where Berkeley is, Berkeley stands as of now. In terms of what are parks, why, and why are they considered sensitive receptors or users? It's because it's, it's areas where children and youth are expected to gather in large numbers. Our parks and recreation plan identifies greenways and linear parks as one of the four types of parks in the city park system, others being public parks, waterfront parks, and special use facilities. And the plan sees the greenways and linear parks function as providing a link between parks and neighborhoods, and providing green buffers between neighborhoods and around the city. So for, in terms of options in front of the Planning Commission, we have identified four options. First is to consider greenways as not parks for purposes of buffers for cannabis businesses, and direct staff to initiate a text amendment to this effect. Reduce the buffer requirement for cannabis purposes from parks to zero, and direct staff to initiate a text amendment. Direct staff to initiate a text amendment to allow a conditional use permit to reduce the buffer requirements with a finding that a reduced buffer will not compromise the public health, safety, and welfare. What this would do is, this would allow the commission to look at each proposal on a case-by-case basis. And lastly is direct staff not to take any text, initiate any text amendments regarding cannabis regulations, and this in effect would not allow Ohana to proceed forward. So that concludes my presentation. One last map is, if we were to reduce the, if we were to exclude the greenways as a sensitive receptor, then these three circles are the only areas that are added to the areas where cannabis businesses may be located. So that's not a lot. And if you're wondering why in the upper, the north end of our city, why these are not available for cannabis businesses, that's because of the zoning. The zoning does not allow cannabis business to be located in this area, and therefore you're not seeing anything there. So these are the four options in front of you. We look for your direction regarding this. The applicant does have a presentation, or you can ask me, and I'm available for questions now or later.
Thank you, Maru. Are there any questions from the commissioners right now for staff?
I have a question, not sure if it's for staff or for the applicant, but what type of consumption would the use permit have if they did move to the other location, if one of these things were amended, you know, one of these regulations to allow them to move? What type of consumption does this?
The onsite consumption? That will again come back to you.
Okay.
Because they will continue to need a CUP, right? So at that time, the commission will have the ability to kind of see where, for example, where the onsite consumption is located, how it is located, how it's ensured, that what are the conditions ensuring that the smells and other things are not. So that will be, right now, they have just kind of very preliminary identified the area, but I expect the flow plans and other details to come forward, depending on whether they can come forward, and that will depend on the direction we receive today.
Got it, thank you.
Are there any further questions from commissioners? Commissioner Sohane?
Yeah. So one question to staff is, do you know if there are other operators in the city?
So the city has allowed only two operators to operate, and one of them is Ohana, and the second one is not yet online. It, but the, but, but it has been identified, it's on San, it's going to be on San Pablo, they are doing construction work. It's in Endante area of San Pablo.
I see.
In one of the storefronts on the ground floor.
Okay. And just, I think you already touched on this part, that depending on how or what decision is taken today, there will be detailed, you know, like building plans and other stuff.
Correct.
So right now, should we refrain from, you know, like any comments related to parking or stuff like that?
You're welcome to comment on any, any aspect of the project. But the staff report did not go into the details because, I mean, the basic question needs to be answered.
Yeah, let me, if I may just jump in. The direction we're looking for the, for from the commission tonight is on these, specifically these four points up here. I think as Mira says, if the code is amended to allow this proposal to go forward, it will need a conditional use permit, and you can address issues such as parking or any other issues of concern at that time.
Okay, great, thank you. Thank you, Charlie.
I'm curious, if you look at the path of travel, since the business is currently located just across the street from where it's proposed, to the access points, how much difference is there in the distance to the greenway?
So the, at the time, when EBT went in, that greenway was not built.
Ah, okay.
So therefore, it escaped the 200, I mean, so that 250 was not, that buffer did not exist.
Ah, so it was grandfathered in?
Yeah.
Okay, that makes sense.
Commissioner Keller?
Well, I just, I have a problem with that, because that location has been identified as a greenway for years. It just wasn't developed.
Right.
So I can't subscribe to the fact that they got in under that because the greenway wasn't there. It was always planned to be there. So I agree, I mean, I'm seeing Commissioner Donaldson saying is, the door is going to be almost right across from the other one. So, so I think, to your question, it's not a lot of difference.
Yes.
In terms of where it is now to where it's going to be.
Maru, can you speak to any requirements or buffers, requirements for bars that might exist close to a park, and if there are any regulations that limit that?
In our city, we do not have that.
Thank you.
I do have a question about, well, let me actually hear the applicant, and it may come up in that, so.
If I may, Chair Guerrero, just with respect to regulations related to alcohol, just as there are state regulations as to the buffer for cannabis, there are similar ones in alcohol, but our city does not have any.
Understood.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, are there any further questions from the commission?
Just one more. So can you clarify if it is 5,000 square feet of dispensary and 5,000 square feet of restaurant?
Yes, because there's one vicinity plan which has inaccurate information.
Yeah, so the title.
But the floor, yeah.
Yeah, the title sheet.
Yeah, the title sheet, correct.
Okay, great, thank you.
All right, Commissioner Keller?
I do have a question for the assistant city attorneys. Now that you brought that up for the alcohol, do you know what that distance for selling alcohol to public, in relation to public parks is? Because Broken Rack has a alcohol consumption rate on the greenway.
Hold on just a moment. So under state law, basically, ABC is able to refuse to issue a license if those premises are within 600 feet of schools or public playgrounds or nonprofit youth facilities. So parks, greenways would be excluded.
Thank you.
Oh, sorry, it's not a mandatory buffer, it just gives the state the discretion.
And for clarification, it gives the state or the city discretion?
The state.
Got it. All right, Commissioner Barrera?
Yeah, just to piggyback off that question, I was wondering, are there, do, does the city have these kind of buffer requirements for retail locations that sell tobacco?
No, we do not.
Yes, we do. We have buffer restrictions.
There's something, we don't, I don't believe we have any tobacco, specific tobacco stores. Navar looks like she wants to join in.
For smoke shops, there's.
And what is?
Do you know what that is?
Isn't it a thousand feet?
Yeah, it's a thousand feet.
I think that comes from the state, if I recall.
I'm not sure the source of it, but it greatly reduces the potential to have any of those businesses.
There are also buffers for adult entertainment and gunshots.
Any more questions here from the commission? Are you sure? Okay, I want to invite the applicant up to speak here, if you have a presentation or you'd like to address the commission.
Thank you, thank you, Mira. Get this thing started. All right. Commissioners, Happy New Year. Thank you for allowing us to stand before you once again, and we're very pleased that the city trusted us with a permit to begin with, and I believe we have not let you down in the context of delivering on every aspect of our promise. First of all, I want to thank the city manager, Mira, city attorney's office, and Charlie in particular, for doing an exceptional job on the analysis, telling me no on the variance, but I don't take it personal. However, the analysis is very fair and balanced, and in the context of the big picture scenario, I think it addresses a much broader point of view that we should really talk about. Speaking selfishly, I am going to look for the variance, and I'm going to push for that because it does shorten the time for us to tackle the issue, and I'll cover what those issues are. However, we are patient in the context of what is the right decision, and we'll work through the process to make it happen. So with that said, we're very proud that we're now expanding on a statewide scale. Oops, right on. All right, so in a way of introductions, just as a way of the title, Ohana is basically where happiness begins and life never ends. Means a lot of things in the context. Means a lot of things in the context of what therapeutic cannabis really can do to bring families together from a therapeutic standpoint. I'm Nasser Azimi, the president of the entire operation on a statewide scale, and soon hopefully will be national. And Dariush, who you met last at the conditional use permit, he's working hard in Sacramento, scaling our operation across the state. To my right is Maryam, she's my daughter, married of course, Maryam Monroe. And in that context, she's the latest addition to sort of transform our operation into the therapeutic metaphor that we are just focused on and continue to push through the process. I'll let her introduce herself very quickly, and then I'll continue with the presentation for you.
All right, good evening. Just a little bit about me, about 30 seconds. I am a former Cal soccer player, I'm a trained accountant, and I'm also a nutritionist. And my biggest passion really is plant medicine and natural healing, and that being said, I have joined Ohana as the chief therapeutics officer, and I'm really looking forward to just promote, continuing to promote the healthy side of cannabis, especially for the elder communities and those that are really in need. And, yeah, just that being said, I'm really looking forward to creating a lot of community successes here for the city of Emeryville.
Thank you.
All right. Of course, Maryam Monroe gets a lot of attention. Also, I have with us Rob Fong, who you met before, former city council member in City Sacramento, trial attorney, very proud to have him on our team. Beth Rodriguez, you met before, she handles all of our administrative practices. We also have Tyler Monroe, who happens to be my son-in-law, and one of our incubator participants. Tyler is doing an exceptional job implementing everything that was promised to the city with regards to our delivery operation. So we're basically going after the four corners, five corners actually, from Marin to South San Francisco, from Richmond down to Fremont, and then all the way out to Walnut Creek, Concord, and Danville, in the context of capturing the delivery opportunity and bringing all that tax dollars into the city of Emeryville, in the way that border equalization or CD TFA handles that. And of course, we have the rest of the team, Sean Day, Will, and Andrew, who are all working hard in the context of driving the program at our operation. Very quickly, before I move forward, we used to be called EBT, but we never accepted it for cannabis. That was a joke, EBT. All right. Also, one quick correction in the context of Miro's exceptional presentation, we are maintaining the pool hall flavor. So, Maryam and I did some research in the context of what would be the best transformation for the community. There is a large following of folks that go to that pool hall, so to speak, Broken Rack, and we felt it necessary to really keep that particular community together, with some upgrades to the overall spectrum of how the operation is going to run, and I'm going to cover that for you in a minute. So we will remain half of what you see on our dispensary site, which is we will have its own management structure separate and apart from what currently is Broken Rack. It'll just be scaled down for economies of scale purposes, in the context of turning it into a highly profitable operation, much like what our cannabis operation is. All right, you can have a seat. Maryam is pregnant, so we want to make sure she gets plenty of rest. All right, in the way of the overview, I'm going to explain a little bit about the, why we even decided to do this, and why we are, we filed a waiver application, and then I'll go through a series of different scenarios to sort of talk about the, the analysis and the rationale behind doing it, and of course, Marilyn decided to retire, so she's hanging up the shoes, and opportunity is really good for us to essentially turn that side of the street, so to speak, into one stretch of relative operations. So that one side is basically all the retail scenarios, would be Broken Rack, Ohana Cannabis, and Honor Bar, and the other side will be predominantly all Zimergen. So one side professional, one side retail, which will really provide that clear and logical separation in the context of what the uses will be for those buildings. Okay, so, basically, what we're talking about here is, as, as some of you eloquently pointed out, we're going across the street. So in that context, there's really not a whole lot of consideration, because we are doing the same things, and we're going to just do it across the street, but in the context of the benefits, they're significant. So, we're going to do so by achieving economies of scale in terms of facility, and the hottest commodity in Emeryville, called parking. So, right now, parking is a big dilemma in that stretch. Once Zimergen moves in, things will settle down, and of course, once hopefully we converge Ohana Cannabis and Broken Rack, that's going to give us a larger base of parking spaces. By the way, that's Nathan, our landlord. They promised that we'll have some remedy with regards to the parking, and I'm going to hold them to that. So that is a significant scenario from our perspective, because in every retail operation, parking is an absolute necessity, and Emeryville is no exception. And quite honestly, the street parking is a, a story of its own, because I see people just come park in the green zone and jump on Bart or Amtrak, and basically go into the city and work, and leave us stranded in the context of the type of parking that we need for transitionary customers that come and go. So this plan really will help remedy that from an economies of scale standpoint as it relates to parking. Of course, from a staffing standpoint, we'll be able to achieve some economies of scale there, and in, in that context, we'll be able to increase pay, because if we leverage the facility and run two profitable operations, guess what? Our profitability is going to reciprocate and pay them a higher wage in the context of how we see that coming to be. And of course, Zimergen taking over, we actually are operating within 5,000, but we're holding 10,000. So, that means 10,000 square feet worth of new jobs that Zimergen is going to bring in, and that's high-paid jobs that they hire for. In addition to that, imagine Marilyn retiring, the place getting sold to some unknown individual, and there will be no succession planning for a community activity that a lot of people like, and that is the pool hall. I'm going to make sure that that aspect of the operation survives and becomes a permanent scenario within our community. Of course, looking at it plainly, you know, I'm glad you all brought up the idea of, you know, greenway was there, or planned for, for, for that matter. We believe a relocation would actually reduce visibility from the greenway. So, if this is like the greenway, if you look straight, you can see Ohana Cannabis. If we move across the street, that signage is going to disappear, and this side is not going to be touched, neither is this side, and I'll cover that in detail for you. So we're essentially and effectively not only achieving economies of scale, if anyone is concerned about visibility of cannabis to the greenway traffic, it's actually going to be reduced. All right, a little bit about our accomplishments. So, we are rapidly expanding across the state, we are a vertically integrated cannabis operation. We built our operation on the basis of business fundamentals. Everything about our operation is profitable and growing at a rate of 30% quarter-over-quarter. That's exceptional growth in the context of how the industry is being looked at right now, whereby some of our competitors are going from $7 a share down to 50 cents. We're going in the opposite direction, all because of the fact that we leverage technology, we basically heavily rely on Business 101, and we focus on cannabis not to get you how high, we focus on it as a remedial aspect of solving people's problems, and that's why Maryam is at the table, basically committed to that particular spectrum. We have also met and exceeded all of our commitments to city of Emeryville. You know, we've basically blown past our financial objectives, the growth cycles, foot traffic into the scenario, and once we deal with this parking scenario, I guarantee you, we're going to double and triple that particular aspects of our operation. As far as community benefit, you see me just about everywhere, right? So in that context, we're very active, we managed to, we did a, an art exhibit at our facility, we've had numerous events, fundraising, and managed to raise over $100,000 over the past year in donations and in volunteer hours that myself and my staff participated in within the community activities. We also created a number of new knowledge jobs in the context of the higher pays and such, and in that context, we also are implementing our robust incubator program to develop operators in the cannabis industry, and Tyler is a great example of that. And most importantly, no one in the community that has transportation issues or what have you is going to resort to untested street corner cannabis. We're basically Phase 3 tested, we're basi, we're complying in every aspect of the work, and providing safe and tested cannabis to our community members, and we're very proud of that. For that, we gave ourselves an A+. All right, let's talk about buffer zones. So buffer zones were created, as Miro mentioned, in relations to shielding and protecting children. You know, in, in the project description that I presented, we are exceptionally focused on that, you know, we basically go into the community, we educate youth and such about the damaging impact of cannabis across the board. We're not just doing it in Emeryville, we're doing it statewide, because it is in fact a, a, a scenario that can slow you down, change your direction of life, and we make sure children in particular of all ages understand that peer pressure, cannabis, and things of that nature, in particular, high potency cannabis that could be damaging in the context of taking your eyes off the eight ball. So, we're very active on that, we respect that aspect of the industry, and we will not do anything to damage that. The reason for the buffer zone obviously is to protect children. So in that context, we do everything possible to do that, to protect them. State established that as a framework, it is not a cast in concrete as, as basically was talked about. And as a general guideline, BCC, Bureau of Cannabis Control, uses audience composition. And what that means is, what is the general makeup of a neighborhood that, where cannabis is present? So, that is predominantly used for advertising. I cannot advertise in a neighborhood that has an audience composition adults, less than 71.6%. So that's about, what is it, 28.4%. So even the state allows visibility of cannabis advertising, 28.4% children. Emeryville, if you look on this side, this pyramid, it, it's sort of a fine print, but I think you have it on your screen, right? So, the children down here are representing roughly about 700, and this is a 2019 data. So in that context, 700 out of 12,000 population is just slightly over half a percent. In retrospect, we're only really talking about half a percent. To further demonstrate the scenario, if you look at this particular slide, you'll see that all the schools and children's scenarios are on the side where there is residences. On this side, there's basically a bunch of commercial, industrial, retail operations with practically no path to travel for children. And we monitor the greenway, in fact, you know, we basically stood out there for days to make sure children are not populating that area, and guess what? But that doesn't say, you know, we disrespect the scenario. All I'm saying is, reality is, greenway is not attracting a whole lot of kids. What is, is this particular area. There's a playground right there, there's slides, there's swings, definitely children are attracted to that, and based on this Google Earth drawing, it's nearly 600 feet away. So, and it's predominantly in the, in the residential zone, and no path to travel to where we're proposing to relocate. So in this particular scenario, I think the Planning Commission, as well as City Council, have the, the authorization delegated by the state to make a good decision and essentially help us bring the benefits that we're talking about. I'm not going to beat this one to death, because I think Miro did a great job. I didn't even know Berkeley was a zero buffer from parks, glad to hear that. It's all driven by the decision related to real estate, and Emeryville, obviously, very tough in the context of, I worked very hard to try to get the landlord to sell me the place. Buying a place in Emeryville is like trying to locate gold in the rush country. So, I'm very interested in basically doing that, but it's extremely difficult in the context of some of the buffer scenarios that we're talking about. So a number of jurisdictions have already granted waivers and variances, and this will be nothing new in the context of what the state is used to and has already granted. So, let's talk about the operation. We are looking at a range of 3,500 to 5,000 square feet of the facility becoming available for storefront, consumption, delivery. So, to your point, Commissioner, consumption will be exactly what we have now, across the street. So we'll have powerful air filtration system, behind closed doors, air curtains. When anybody walks into our dispensary, they're amazed that we even have a consumption area, because they smell nothing. If they go outside, they smell something by the, you know, in, in the perimeters of the greenway, which we're going to tackle, and I'm going to explain how. But inside our facility, we have air measurement tools and all kinds of technology to make sure that within the consumption area, no odor is actually released from the consumption rooms. So we'll basically move storefront, consumption, and delivery across the street, and the format will be identical. Same Apple Store format, same consultants walking around with an iPad. Basically, we'll have rooms on the side for consumption purposes, sealed, retrofitted with filtration technology, the whole nine yards. So this will be basically the area for that. There's a path of delivery, so our delivery vehicles basically will use that particular scenario to go in and out, which is accessible to the parking. Consumption will be in the back area, would build sealed rooms basically, and the storefront will be operating in this particular area. It has its own ADA compliant entrance, so, and it's right adjacent to the parking. So, basically, this side will be sacred in the context of what it is and the pool hall that is established already. As, as it relates to the pool hall, I met with the Broken Rack folks, who are basically in charge of the, the league that goes on every so often. We need 10 tables to maintain the integrity of the league from an operational standpoint. So, we can definitely put, right now, the 5,000 represents that. 5,000 represents 10 pool tables that will allow us to continue the league as is, and maybe even increase the frequency of it. The only dilemma with that is when we have league nights, other folks that are using the restaurant and bar and such will not have a table to play. That's what explains the 3,500. So we're evaluating different options, you know, if we go 3,500 in this area, we can still make it happen in terms of storefront consumption delivery, if, and then that would basically allow us to have 13 to 14 tables. So on a league night, we'll have three or four more tables to accommodate other patrons. As far as the remaining aspect of it, so the, the pool hall, the restaurant, bar, what you see right now is what you get, except part of it will be storefront and such. We are going to upgrade the, the seating areas, you know, in the context of sort of a scale-up seating area, tables, chairs, and we are planning to improve or change up the menu a little bit. I'm a big fan of this culinary school in, in Napa, and I know, I got to know a few of the chefs over there, and very interested in bringing one of the chefs' culinary schools. over there, and very interested in bringing one of the chefs, this culinary school, they basically teach chefs about international cuisine, so they know how to do French, Italian, Japanese. So negotiated the scenario with one of the recent graduates who's exceptionally skilled and basically packs the joint in, no pun intended, in Napa, and definitely going to consider bringing him in. And of course, the existing kitchen staff, the Broken Rack, love him. I love the chicken taco over there, and I tell Marilyn that every time. So they're going to remain intact. So improvements really would be on the food menu side, on the seating areas and such. The rest of it will, for the most part, remain the same. This wall is completely going to separate the two areas. It'll be a highly reinforced wall with no access. So there'll be absolutely no interaction between the two sides. If folks want to, you know, do one or the other, they will have to go all the way out as the Bureau of Cannabis Control requires, you know, you have to exit and go to whatever other facilities. And that's exactly what we're implementing. I already vetted this idea and plan with the BCC, and everything is basically in line with the four corners of the regulatory scenarios that they implement. Both sites will be independently operating and managed, so no crossover whatsoever. In fact, mixing cannabis and alcohol, Governor Brown, you know, outlawed it anyway, so no way around that. All right, in terms of the front elevation, this will be the ADA entrance for the cannabis side. This will be the stretch of parkings, roughly about fourteen of them is what we count, including the ADA ones, would be inaccessible. This again is the entrance into the cannabis side, and these are the two entrances into the bar and restaurant area as we know them today. So that aspect of the situation will remain the same. As mentioned before, zero crossover of products. You will not find cannabis products on the Broken Rack side, you will not find a drop of alcohol on the cannabis side. Also, in terms of the functions, we're not going to cross them over. There will be no cross-advertising of Broken Rack or cannabis on either side of the scenario. Strictly managed under different situations, and the folks, in fact, there's a fellow named Patrick who's running Broken Rack for Maryland, very knowledgeable individual, very cool man, and we're definitely going to keep him around. Okay, in terms of the Greenway itself, we're very focused to do nothing in the sense of, you know, creating any sort of a cannabis visibility. So basically, what you see here today, on this corner, directly in the back of where the cannabis area is going to be, will remain exactly as is. So it'll be no signage, no advertising, nothing. The only thing that you would see is some security technology, you know, some cameras and such, in order to, for our command center, to monitor any and all activities in that area. And we'll have, you know, right now, we have roughly about seven security patrols on staff, and they will be transferring over across the street. We'll have them do three rotations of patrol per hour. The goal is to really prevent any unauthorized activities in this area. At thirteen thirty-three, a couple of the tenants, thirteen thirty-three Powell, complained about cannabis odor, and I took it real personal because I feel that it reflects on us in that context. And I went and met with a few of the folks over there that run their association, and they understood that cannabis odors are coming predominantly from folks that are, you know, firing it up right back here. And I assured them that we're going to monitor that, and we're going to shut that down. You know, that aspect of the situation will definitely need to stop because now we'll have a consumption area, folks can come in and use cannabis inside instead of doing it outside. So security will really tightly control that and monitor it to make sure that any unauthorized activities, anything that's banned by the city, will also be banned on the Greenway. All right, let's talk about the options. Love the options. You know, I love the fact that city staff and city attorney's office, well, I don't like the fourth option, let's be real. That's why I crossed it out. Let's not even think about that. From our perspective, really, any of the top three options are great from a broad spectrum. Evaluating a variance, you know, I hear Miro in the context of the general applicability of it. You know, we looked through the city's laws and such, and this is how variance is defined. From our perspective, it gives the Planning Commission discretion to do the right thing and make the right decision for the community and for the business environment. And in that context, you know, we would like that on the table, just as well as the other options that were talked about. Looking at it from a conditional use perspective, that makes sense, you know, I think that still puts the city and the Planning Commission and the City Council, quite honestly, in the mode of making that final decision. If a lot of the situation related to children, quite honestly, is related to the operator. If you have a bad operator, give him a conditional use permit, next thing you know, you got issues. I think we proved ourselves in the context of how effective we are in running a business, running cannabis from a therapeutic standpoint, and giving back to the community in the way that matters, including education of the children. Thank you so much, appreciate your time.
Thank you, Nasir. So at this time, I want to go ahead and open it up for questions to the applicant from the commission. I can start my left here with, nope. All right, are there any questions? Oh.
Just a comment.
Commissioner Sohane?
Yeah, just a comment about the...
We have a moment to make comments in just a few minutes. At this point, we are only asking questions.
Yeah.
Is that okay?
No questions, yeah.
Okay, sorry. All right, is there anything else that you'd like to say to the commission?
The fact that there are no questions, I take that as an A+.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, so at this time, I want to open it up for a public comment from any members of the public that would like to speak on behalf of this item. All right, see none? Oh, we have one. All right. Hello.
Hi, my name's Marilyn Boucher, and my husband and I own the Broken Rack, and I promised to come here tonight to speak in support of Mr. Rizimi's request for a variance. I can support what he said in a couple of different ways. One, as far as the Greenway, this section that was most recently completed, lamentably, it's not very much used. I've talked to the city programs about ways maybe the city could increase use of the park, but to the extent that it is used, it is almost a hundred percent adults. And were usage increased, it would not be a place where children would be enticed to come on a regular basis because there's no playground equipment, there's no basketball support, there's really nothing for children in the park. It's not made to be a children's park. Secondly, the Ohana distributie and EBT before it has been our neighbors across the street for about a year and a half, and we've had zero problems with that. We, for the most part, his clients seem to come to make a purchase, they come, they go in, they come out in a few minutes, they leave. There hasn't been any kind of loitering problem or any kind of unpleasant activity. And he does have security people on all the time. And as far as odors, yeah, if you have people who have smoked and they come into your building or wherever, they're going to have that odor on their clothing. But as far as coming from his building, I've never experienced that. So I think he's been a positive member of the community, and I also have to say, along with my desperate desire to retire, our business with the last increase in MWO, not to say that there are other factors, really has made our business as it's currently structured not survivable, not sustainable. And that saddens us, but we think from a realistic standpoint that dividing this ten thousand square feet and having two businesses operate it out of it is a much more viable situation. So thank you for your time.
Thank you, Marilyn. All right, we have another public speaker. If you can actually fill out a card there with your name, and just turn it in.
You can give it to us afterward.
Yeah. All right. Hello.
Hello, my name's Nathan Patrowski. I'm one of the owners of the properties that are being discussed tonight. Worked with Nasser, there he is, from the beginning, and with Marilyn, with the Broken Rack, with the Honor Bar, when we purchased the property, we assumed that lease, the lease that was present, and we have, this has been an ongoing experience of getting to adjust to what cannabis was going to be like in the neighborhood. Our office is at fourteen seventy-five Powell, so we have experienced all the activity. And one of the things that became very clear to us to have something like this work out is the ability to start to organize all the retail on one side. Symergen, who came along later in time, but has been excited about growing in our neighborhood and would be hopeful to take on the rest of the space, eliminating the confusion of parking because currently, Ohana parks at the same side of the building as the Broken Rack does. So when people are pointed of where to go, they're confused because they, Ohana's in the industrial building, and yet parking is across the street, so it's, so people end up parking in our office facility. It makes it a mess. And this idea of being able to see maybe parking meters, get on the street, and start to control more of the parking would be a joy, and I hopefully create more revenue for the city. The idea of having all the retail on that side, Ohana controlling a more efficient way of running their business, and I think one of the things that was difficult for Broken Rack, they took on, you know, an enormous amount of square footage, I think that didn't help them as much as it could have. I think by consolidating the two operations into one and seeing everyone in their, in the places where they can be the most efficient, retail on one side, lab on the other side, our office on the other side, I think just makes it work for everybody. So I'm an advocate for it. I go visit Ohana on a personal basis, so I don't disagree with the usage of it, and I would hope that you see it in your wherewithal to approve their variance request.
Thank you. All right, are there any further public comments for this agenda item? See none? Want to go ahead and close public comment? All right, I'm going to open it back up for comments from the commissioners. I'll start with you, Commissioner Sohane.
Great, thank you. Thanks, everyone, for the detailed presentation. I just want to take a step back and just talk about parks in Emeryville. So if we look at our city as a whole, and we can, you know, obviously take example of the graphics that have been attached by staff, there are very few parks in the city of Emeryville, very few places for residents to, you know, like, enjoy and engage with nature. And in my mind, Emeryville Greenway is an asset to the city, which is used by a lot of residents, a lot of children, a lot of, you know, like, women, a lot of men for their day-to-day activities. I see women who are expecting people, walking their dogs, just, you know, like this, in the evenings and in mornings, and hence, taking away its designation as a park is not something that I'm very comfortable with, primarily because this is something, you know, with all the other developments that's happening in Emeryville. I think Greenway's designation as a park is really important to make sure we have these green spaces, you know, weave in the entire city's landscape. The second point that I want to make out here is that, you know, the buffer requirement, you know, and I'm just going down the list that has been provided by the staff, is that Emeryville's requirement, or the buffer requirement, of two fifty feet is significantly less compared to the other cities that are shown out here, or let me say, most of the other cities that are shown out here. And again, if you go back and look at the two exhibits that the city created, there are only three parcels or three potential locations that open up by revising the require, or, you know, eliminating the buffer requirement. And the dotted space, which is the unrestricted space that you see out here, there are quite plenty of those all around the city. So taking away that buffer requirement will, is not something that I would encourage because, you know, as there are more parks that are created as part of new development, as there are more Greenways that are created, I still feel that there should be some sort of a buffer that exists for establishments such as these. And finally, the comment that I wanted to make earlier was just a correction in the presentation that you made about the number of children that are present out here. I think you mentioned half a percent, but that's close to five point eight percent. And if you also count in, you know, like fifteen to twenty years old, that number goes up to as high as eight percent. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Donaldson?
Thank you for the presentation. I'm certainly supportive of your business, and I'm sad that, I hope Marilyn looks forward to a happy retirement, sad to see the Broken Rack going, but it sounds like there would be some continuity. And the option that I think makes the most sense is the amendment allowing for a reduction in the buffer if it's, if we're, make a finding that it would not compromise the public health, safety, or welfare because your business has been operating in a way that would, I think, fulfill that requirement, and I think that would allow you to go forward without us having to say that Greenways are not parks because, as Commissioner Sohane said, I would like to see them remain as parks because we don't know what we will be putting in them in the future and how they'll be used in the future. And I think that this one makes sense and that you would not have a problem with it, other than I understand there's a timing issue, but that's my thought.
Thank you. Commissioner Barretta?
Okay. I agree with the comments that the other commissioners have made, and so I also support option three. It seems to be the one that makes the most sense and has protection for our parks. And in terms of, you know, Nasir, you're concerned with the timeframe for doing a text amendment or some of these options that are on the screen right now, I think that it doesn't make sense to pursue the variance option because even though the definition of the variance does give the commission the ability to, you know, make adjustments for certain parcels, there are findings that we have to make to justify being able to, you know, grant these exceptions. And I definitely agree with staff that it's not going to be possible to make finding B and C, so the finding about the topography and the finding about the, if it's necessary to preserve enjoyment and that kind of thing. So it just seems that it might be a waste of time to go down the variance route because it seems very clear to me and to staff that, you know, the commission would have a very hard time justifying, making these findings for the variance. In addition to that, I just would also like to say that I have visited Ohana and other dispensaries in the Bay Area, and it's very difficult for people to get into those places. Like, even as an adult, you have to provide your ID, and there's always like a little entrance space that's separated from the rest of the shop where you have to present your information, and they take it down, and they put you on record, and it's not like a liquor store where you can just walk in and out and, you know, not interface with anybody. These spaces are very well-defined and very secure, and it's difficult for a kid, even if they are in a park nearby, to go in and, you know, unless you have a bad operator. But from my experience with visiting these But from my experience with visiting these places around the Bay Area, all of them are very strict about how they let people in because it's, you know, this is, their, their, permits and stuff like that are on the line, so people don't want to risk that when it takes so much to actually get these businesses established. So it's, just seems like people are very careful for that reason. So I, I kind of want to just put it on the record that I, I don't feel a concern with having this use close to an area where there are children or parks or anything like that for that very reason, that it just seems like there's an extremely high amount of security and a lot of responsible people that are, are part of the business.
Thank you. Uh, Vice Chair Thompson?
Yeah. Hey, thanks for your presentation. Um, it was really great to learn about that and it's also good to hear that, uh, that this business has been so successful over the past year. Oh, sorry. Good, good to see that you have been, um, successful over the last year and, and a good neighbor. So that's, that's really encouraging. Unfortunately, in terms of the location, um, you know, I am sensitive to the Greenway and at this time, uh, you know, this is, is not really a great location for this use. Um, I do support the, the, um, the not initiating any text amendment, but I'd like to continue to understand the options as we move forward.
Commissioner Tom, uh, Keller, I'm sorry.
Again, I echo pretty much the sentiments of the commission. I am proud to have you guys here. I think you're doing a very good job in the business. I, I see a number of differences in, in way we discuss. Currently, the Greenway is not used as we had hoped or that we hope to. The thing being is that the connection's not complete and we are working on the completion. We're going to connect that Greenway to the bridge over to Bay Street, so I think its use and impact is going to go up very much. That being said, I don't fear that your location is going to be a detriment to children. It's obvious cannabis is all around us. I was coming, walking back from campus today and I was walking down, I had to change sides of the street because a guy was walking down the street smoking a Dewey. And it was like, you know, this is, it's here, it's pervasive, it's in our, and it's in our communities. And I think you guys are going to do your best to maintain it and keep it in control. Um, I go more towards the option of three. I don't want to see us change the greenways, not from parks, they are parks, they are linear parks, they're very successful in our community and I don't want to change that designation. I think, um, option three gives us a opportunity to do a case-by-case basis because we are so small, we really need to look at every single use of every single bit of property here. We need to have flexibility and control in that. So I think three gives us that control. My hope is that, I'm really saddened that, um, Broken Rack hasn't done better and especially with the outside dining on the Greenway. And I'm really hopeful that you guys can really activate that and make that a more special space. And I think once the bridge is open and we have much more connectivity, that that will happen. And I think you guys have the ability to, to bring that into a more lively space. I'm glad that our chair brought up the distinction or connection to alcohol because it's always been my contention that I see cannabis equal to alcohol. I think they're both the same thing, even though cannabis has a lot more medicinal purposes and I think it's better, but I look at it as, as kind of, it is an intoxicant and people do use it for that. And alcohol is right there on the Greenway. I mean, people sit outside there. I've sat out there myself and had a drink and I don't see that as being a detriment to children. I've even seen our vice chair walking her child along, uh, um, Horton Street. And so I know that's a pathway that people do use. I just don't think that this is a detriment or a threat to our children to have this, this business there. But I think using option three gives us the flexibility to allow this and to, and to keep control on things. And I think the variance, again, I don't think we can make all the findings required. And even if we did, I think your experience that you're looking for could be, um, detoured if someone files an appeal to city council and that would really slow you down. I think this actually will end up being cleaner. It may take a little while longer, but I think that's probably the best way to go. And I really think your business can not only do well and have no different, I mean, being across the street, really, is that really that big of a difference in location? It's not. But I think what you can do for the Broken Rack in being there is going to really be what truly is going to be a benefit to the city. And I think where you're located now with Zimergen's growth, growth with, um, uh, Biomed moving in, I got a feeling that tilt of building may go away someday. And then that means your business will go away as well. So I think this could be a win for all of us in many respects.
Thank you. All right. So I, I agree with, uh, my, most of my commissioners here in, in terms of the, uh, the option one. Um, I wouldn't want to change, um, greenways to not be parks. And so that's my first piece there. Uh, Nasser, I want to, uh, thank you for including the, the billiards as part of the, um, the proposal. Um, that's, that would be a detriment for, for our community to lose that space. Um, and so, uh, that's something I'm really happy about in seeing your presentation today. Marilyn, I want to wish you all the best in your future retirement. Um, and, um, and in terms of the choice here that, that I, um, would recommend us moving forward with, uh, I'm in agreement with most of my colleagues here. I think that, uh, option three seems to be the best option that we have here. And, and you know, I, I, I feel as though, uh, de-stigmatizing the use of cannabis is really important as well. And so that's a question that I proposed earlier in terms of how we look, look at these compared to bars, uh, because, uh, there are many health benefits to, to using cannabis, um, that, that we still are exploring. And, and so I'd like for us to, to think about this as a way, um, that's also improving the quality of life for residents here in Emeryville. Um, and so, uh, thank you for all the work that you're doing. Um, and, uh, this is an action item, um, so, um, we're looking for, um, the support of one of these.
I believe, well, it's a study session, right?
Yes.
So we're not taking a vote?
No, not really. We're just looking for your, your direction. And what I hear is a, uh, not, it's not unanimous, but I hear a majority of the commissioners supporting option three to amend the code for a conditional use permit.
Yes. Is there anybody that would like to speak, um, against that?
I believe, uh, Vice Chair Thompson was not in.
Yeah. I chose separately, but I'm not in the majority.
Okay. All right.
All right. So I think the next step here will be for us to, uh, have a study session with the city council on this issue and assuming they agree with you, uh, then it would come back to the commission for a recommendation on a, uh, amendment to the planning regulations.
Thank you, Charlie. All right. Um, so we're going to move on.
I have.
Yes. Commissioner Barretta?
I have a proposition for you, um, Chair Guerrero and the rest of the commission and staff and the audience. I see two very small children in the audience tonight and I believe that they are here with the Hilton Garden Inn Appeal. And I was wondering if it would be an option for us to move that item, um, forward before the next study session, just to give these parents an opportunity to go home and get some sleep and deal, you know, handle their children.
I appreciate that. Um, I, I am comfortable moving forward with that. And, um, at this point, let's see. Uh, Charlie, um, we're going to go ahead and, and, and move, um, the Hilton Garden Inn Appeal.
All right.
To the next item.
Okay. So do you want to discuss the, uh, procedure for that?
Yes, please.
Okay. The, the procedure we recommend to the chair and to the commission for this item is that we limit speakers to three minutes as we normally do, including both the applicant and the appellant, uh, with the applicant speaking first and the appellant speaking next and then all other people who want to speak coming after that. However, we would also suggest to the chair that if you wish to allow people to cede time to each other, that they be allowed to do so, so that the applicant and the appellant could potentially speak for more than three minutes if they had people ceding time, uh, with no more than ten minutes maximum for each. Would that be an acceptable procedure for the commission?
Y- yes, Charlie. Uh, thank you for making that clear.
Uh, right now I have three speaker cards. Uh, I believe they are all associated with the appellant. And if, uh, none of them indicate anything about ceding time, so they could perhaps address that when they come forward. I have no other speaker cards. The applicant may wish to turn in a speaker, speaker card or more, and anyone else who wants to talk on this item.
All right. Uh, so at this point, um, we're moving on to public hearing, uh, for item eight point one. This is the Hilton Garden Inn Appeal. And I'll let you go ahead and take it away, Navarre.
Thank you. Good evening, Chair. Good evening, Commission. So here we are discussing the Hilton Garden Inn Appeal. So the site location is eighteen hundred Powell Street. So for the timeline, um, on June third, twenty nineteen, a minor conditional use permit application was submitted. In September, the permit was approved within the twenty-day appeal period. An appeal was received, uh, by staff. On December fifth, a corrected approval letter was issued regarding, uh, the original approval in September. That had no impact on the appeal. And on December twelfth, uh, the appeal came to the planning commission for direction and, uh, you set a public hearing date for tonight, and here we are tonight. So for overview, um, there's a minor conditional use permit to convert existing meeting rooms on the top fourteenth floor to twenty-three new guest rooms and to cover the storage space, uh, pardon, not cover, convert the storage space on the second floor to two new guest rooms. There is no exterior building modifications as part of this. The appeal has to do with the top floor and it's not in regards to the second floor modifications. Nonetheless, here is the second floor. At the top, we have the existing plans and kind of towards the middle, uh, you can see there's some storage area and it's proposed to be, uh, changed to two rooms. And then the top floor ballroom and meeting rooms, uh, that takes up the entirety of that floor is proposed to be changed into the, uh, guest rooms as I mentioned before. So the required findings for a minor conditional use permit or any conditional use permit, there's five of them. Uh, the original appeal, uh, letter, uh, uh, contended that number D was not okay, that the proposed use as its proposed location will provide a service or facility that will contribute to the general well-being of the surrounding neighborhood or community. The appellant disagreed with that finding. So the appellant stated additional rooms will not contribute to general well-being, that the loss of the ballroom, uh, uh, would be detrimental to Emeryville and the community at large and the loss of the facility, uh, would, uh, that's an important facility that hosts many different types of events, that there is no comparable facility in the city. And it also eliminates well-paying union jobs and the food and beverage department at the hotel. So, uh, and follow-up to your last meeting, there was another, uh, appeal letter received. Uh, this had four overarching items. The first one was that the approval is invalid because it refers to the incorrect use permit. As discussed in the staff report, uh, staff, uh, issued a corrected letter that I mentioned before, and the corrected letter did not change or impact the use permit itself, the conditions, or the findings. Both the original and the corrected approval letter also identified the correct parcel and address under discussion. Secondly, the appeal letter stated that the approval was incorrectly issued because the existing hotel is a non-conforming use. At the time of approval, uh, staff was not able to locate a use permit, but did assume that there was one because of the numerous building permits and records demonstrating that the city permitted construction. In preparation for this, uh, appeal, we were able to find an ordinance from nineteen sixty-nine that demonstrates that a use permit was approved. And, uh, regardless, non-conforming uses can be expanded with a minor conditional use permit. Thirdly, uh, the appellant stated the removal of the top floor ballroom removes community assembly use from a property that's required to have a mix of uses and a mixed-use zone. And while, um, it's, that is true, that, uh, mixed-use zones require a mix of uses for sites between one and five acres, this project, um, is not considered a development because it's just modifying an accessory use. It's not, uh, actual different uses on the site. And that's explained, uh, more thoroughly in the staff report as well. And fourth, uh, the appellant stated that the required findings cannot be made. And, uh, staff finds that the elimination of the ballroom does remove an accessory use, but it does not reduce the use mix or the economic activity for the use that is a hotel. And the finding of economic vitality and general well-being by providing additional guest room increases the capacity of the primary use, which is a hotel. And, uh, it's hard to see, but this is the wonderful scanned copy we found of the ordinance, uh, from nineteen sixty-nine, zooming in a little bit, trying to make it a little bit easier to read. Uh, the underlying parts do state that it's a use permit at the top there and then lower on the page that it's for the Hill, the Holiday Inn Development Plan for, uh, I can't read it from here, but it is in this, uh, it is attached to the staff report and it, it states the site location of being at Powell Street and Frontage Road. So it's very clear that there was a hotel approved for the site and that there's a use permit for it. So staff recommends that the planning commission have a public hearing, take testimony and close the hearing. Then the resolution to disapprove the director's action, which you have for you. So we have a resolution to approve and a resolution to disapprove the director's action. The resolution of denial, um, all of the findings are blank. So, uh, denial only requires that one finding cannot be made, but you need to state what that would be. So we need direction on that. Alternatively, the commission may also choose to continue the hearing and request a supplemental report or approve the director's action, but impose additional conditions of approval if you deem that necessary. Oh, and that's my, end of my presentation.
Thank you, Navarre. Are there any questions from the, uh, commission here for Navarre? All right. Commissioner Keller?
Navarre, I want to just make it clear for the people who don't have the benefit of your staff report that might be on TV or on the audience. I'm looking at the letter, the appeal letter, uh, January eighth, and you went through the four points. I'd like to just clarify each of those points for us and everyone else, so it's that the approval is invalid because it refers to an incorrect permit. Is that true or not true? Is that correct?
The permit, oh, the.
The first statement.
So initially, the permit was issued and it referenced a conditional use permit that was not relevant to the site. Once staff became aware that that was not relevant, we issued a corrected approval letter and it stated that this was still for this site and it just removed that.
In simple terms, the item on here says that it refers to an incorrect use permit. Is that statement true or not true?
Let me take that. It, yes.
It was true, but it was corrected. Is that what?
It's true, but it was corrected. The first part of that statement that says the approval is invalid.
Yes.
Is not true.
Thank you.
Uh, it is not true because we corrected that error.
Okay. Also, uh, number two, that the permit was incorrectly issued because the existing hotel is a non-conforming use. Is that true or not true?
Is, uh, so we have the use permit, it is a conforming use, has it's a use permit?
So that statement is not true.
Not true. Okay. That the removal of the top floor of the ballroom removes community assembly use from the property that is over an acre, so it is not mixed uses. I can almost answer that question myself because the building is still a use, a, uh, mixed use. It has a hotel, it has a restaurant, it has a bar, it has other community rooms that are meeting rooms, they, although they are smaller than the current one. So the building is still a mixed use.
I'd like to clarify that, if I may. It's actually a single use. Uh, the way the planning regulations talk about use classification is that each establishment is classified according to its predominant characteristics. Um, and then any other function of that, and that is the primary use. And any other function that occurs within that establishment is considered an accessory use. So the primary use is hotel. The community assembly or however it's classified is accessory. And, and if there's a restaurant in there, a bar or whatever, those are all accessory uses because the hotel is a single establishment. If there were multiple establishments on the site, for example, a hotel and a retail store that wasn't part of the hotel, a separate building, uh, on the same site, those would be two separate establishments. They would have two separate primary uses and that would be mixed use. But the hotel is a single use and it has all of these various accessory functions, but that does not make it mixed use.
So this is the case with the existing ballroom and without the existing ballroom?
Right. Doesn't make a difference.
So then the fourth statement, required findings cannot be made, is also not true.
In staff's opinion.
Thank you.
Commissioner Barretta?
I have a question. Are the minor conditional use permit findings the same as the conditional use permit findings that we typically see that are in some of our, this is, they're the same findings?
Correct. The, the findings for a conditional use, conditional use permit are not different for minor or major. There are conditional use permit findings for specialized use permits that are different, but that's not relevant to this project.
Okay. And so for the minors, this, for the minor conditional use permits, staff gets to, you know, make the, the arguments to, that you, that you can make the findings for the minor conditional use permit.
Correct.
Vice Chair Thompson?
Um, no comment.
Uh, do you have any questions here? Commissioner Donaldson?
Um, I was looking for a little clarification on the accessory use and the individual use and I think that, uh, Charlie provided that.
Great. Uh, moving on, Commissioner Sohane?
No.
All right. Uh, there are no further questions from the commission for staff at this point. Uh, we want to go ahead and, and invite the applicant up, um, to speak.
Good evening. Chairman Guerrero, Vice Chairman Thompson, and commissioners. Uh, my name is Tom Bardnett. I'm the executive vice president of RLJ. I'm the Executive Vice President of RLJ Lodging Trust, and we are the owner of the Hilton Garden Inn, Emeryville. Also here tonight are members of my team. I have Craig Amos, who's our EVP Design and Construction, Jim Willen, who's our VP of Design and Construction, and our architect Eli, who's also in the audience tonight. And they'll be here to answer any questions if you have questions that I don't answer in my presentation. We purchased the Hilton Garden Inn, Emeryville in 2012 in June, and also own the Hyatt House, Emeryville, in March of 2014 is when we purchased that hotel. So we are committed to investing in the city and local community. I'd like to tell you a little bit about tonight and explain our thought process as steps taken in deciding to make the hotel a better place for our guests, our associates, the marketplace, and the local community. We'll share the operational concerns of the fourteenth floor that exists that led to this decision, and the importance of increasing the capacity of guest rooms and adding hours and jobs actually to the hotel. I'd like to outline the current situation. This is part of a larger renovation of the whole hotel and the property, and we are planning a significant investment in this asset as this is one part of the project in regards to the fourteenth floor. But the multimillion dollar renovation will actually include guest room renovation, restaurant, lobby, and meeting space on the first floor. So that is encompassing the whole property in regards to the multimillion dollar renovation. The utilization of the fourteenth floor meeting space has moderated and is infrequently sold over the years, in past years. On the other hand, guest room occupancy for the hotel runs very high, and we frequently sell out on a regular basis in our guest rooms. But this frequency of the hotels selling out also does not have the capacity to what we would call unsatisfied demand that actually goes outside of the Emeryville area, as we are very aware of what happens in Northern California and Emeryville itself. And so therefore, considering the fourteenth floor meeting space conversion to guest rooms was, was a choice that we decided to move forward with. The operational challenges of having fourteenth floor meeting space is actually pretty significant and real. And I'd like to describe that a little bit to you so you understand what actually happens when we have events on the fourteenth floor and how they interact with our guests on the other floors that are staying overnight. There is no kitchen on the fourteenth floor, so therefore, all the food and beverage that we have to bring up to that floor has to go up the elevators with our guests at the same time to be able to service that floor. The elevator and transporting, we have three elevators, so transferring not only hotel guests who are staying at the hotel, also need to be combined with trying to get people into the fourteenth floor as we're serving them from a meeting space.
Chair Guerrero, if I may. If the applicant wishes to extend beyond three minutes, I would suggest that some of your colleagues submit speaker cards and, and cede their time to you.
Yes. Your three limit, three-minute time limit is up to speak, but we can extend some more time if your colleagues are able to turn in some speaker cards here.
Absolutely. It looks like they're doing that, so I don't think we need to wait.
Excellent. And so we will allow you ten minutes total, as we mentioned earlier, with the two gentlemen that are doing the card.
That would be nine minutes if we have two.
You got it.
And I'll work within those, that timeframe.
Excellent. Thank you.
Thank you.
So six more minutes.
Okay. Just to give you an example of when we have events on the fourteenth floor, there's usually either music or there's some type of level of noise that we have floors below the fourteenth floor, and therefore there's interruptions, and many times we'll have to rebate the stay or the amount of business that goes up to that floor, and therefore it causes disruption for our other guests that are actually standing on the floors below the fourteenth floor. So it's become a little bit of an issue with our overall guests staying at the hotel. And Hilton has 100% policy in regards to if there's any issues, we give rebates back to the guests to stay with us. In planning for this renovation, we wanted to get ahead of that because we know the first floor was critical to modernizing the meeting space that we have down there. So moving events from the fourteenth floor to the first floor is critical to have the best solution to continue to allow events of that size to service in our, in our location down there. We've modernized that and spent about $2.7 million on the first floor, and what we've done is we think that servicing the bulk of the events that were on the fourteenth floor is now possible because we've enhanced the private dining room, the pavilion room, which is off of the restaurant, in addition to having board meetings and upscale renovated first floor space where we've updated the carpet, the, the air walls, and have the ability to service similar-sized groups that we do on the fourteenth floor. This will provide a better experience for both overnight guests and event attendees. In addition to converting the fourteenth floor meeting space to guest rooms, it'll allow us to service the unsatisfied demand that we talked about earlier that cannot be accommodated in Emeryville today on the guest room side. The increasing the hotel's ability to meet demand, operate more efficiently, and draw in thousands of more overnight guests, we think is a positive as well. And adding additional payroll is actually going to happen when we service the rooms on the top floor, on the fourteenth floor. By increasing the amount of hours that we have and jobs, there will be no loss of jobs in regards to the changing from the fourteenth floor and servicing those events on the first floor. We anticipate actually adding jobs. There will be two new full-time housekeeping employees and 4,000 additional hours that will occur at the hotel to service the new guest rooms in our estimations. And we'll continue to need the banquet staff employees currently employed at the hotel to service events on the first floor space, which will accommodate many of the events that we service on the fourteenth today. The benefits to the community, we think, are significant. Thousands of new overnight guests will come into Emeryville. RLJ anticipates that the new fourteenth floor guest rooms result in 7,000 additional guest rooms on a hotel basis on an annual timeframe. Those guests will stay, they'll explore and spend money in local shops contributing to the more vibrant urban center, which improves the economic vitality of Emeryville. We also realize in our estimate that there will be additional hotel transient occupancy tax to the city, and our projections will produce roughly, we think, about $180,000 in transient occupancy tax. And most importantly, we think it will create jobs. As noted previously, the room conversion will create jobs and not eliminate them. We have a strong relationship with United Here, and we have just held two successful negotiations for new collective bargaining agreements that have been finalized at both the Hyatt House and the Hilton Garden Inn, Emeryville. So in conclusion, I'd like to make you aware that we believe that the decision to convert the fourteenth floor, it makes sense not only for the hotel, but for the community and the hotel's employees. And based on this, we respectfully ask the Planning Commission to affirm the Planning Director's approval of a minor condition use permit. And finally, as I mentioned earlier, our team is here tonight to answer any questions that you may have that I was unable to address in this presentation. I thank you for your time.
Thank you.
I have a question.
All right. We have a question from the commission to applicant?
It's a clarifying question. So the, one of the spaces that's proposed to be changed is the ballroom, and you mentioned that through your recent renovation, there is a new pavilion on the ground floor, is that correct?
So what we have on the ground floor is about 4,600 square feet, which actually has ballroom space similar to what's upstairs, so we can service many of the events there. The pavilion is actually adjacent to the ballroom space that we have on the first floor and was already there. We renovated the pavilion, which gives you an opportunity to service boardroom meetings in that location. And then we also enhanced in our back of our restaurant what we call our private dining room. So the pavilion was there previously, we have renovated that in our meeting space renovation.
So, I'm sorry, what's the difference between a pavilion and a ballroom?
A ballroom is four different sections where you can actually accommodate a more significant group. The pavilion room is just the name of the room, which is acting more like a boardroom.
They're like meeting rooms?
Exactly. It's like a breakout room.
Okay, okay.
Does that help?
Yes, thank you.
You're welcome.
All right. So are there any other questions as we have the applicant here?
The question I have is kind of obscure, and I don't know if you'll have the numbers, but the, the fourteenth floor is proposed by the appellant that it is a, an amenity for Emeryville, for Emeryville residents. Do you happen to have any idea what percentage of use of that ballroom is done by out-of-town people as compared to people who live in Oakland, Emeryville, Berkeley?
Yeah. I wouldn't have the exact stat, but what we're confident in is, as we looked at who goes into the location and is serviced there, that close to over 80% of those functions we can actually handle down on the first floor in the meeting space that we have there. It's rare where we'll have both meeting space on the first floor and the ballroom on the fourteenth floor occupied at the same time. But I can't answer your exact question in regards to where they come from.
Okay, thank you.
I have a follow-up question. What type of events do you usually see at the ballroom that is there now?
Yeah. There's social functions, receptions, similar things that we have on the downstairs on the first floor as well, and then some meeting rooms that will actually be accommodated as well. But we have the ability, typically in a Hilton Garden Inn with the amount of guest rooms there, it's really not known for meeting space. It was a Holiday Inn previously, as you're aware. So we do sell to a variety of different groups that would use that space today that we think we can accommodate on the first floor.
Okay.
All right, any further questions here, am I right?
No questions.
No questions. Okay, thank you so much for speaking tonight.
You're welcome.
All right, so at this point, I want to, I have three speaker cards for the appellant, and are you all interested in speaking separately? Yes. Okay. So at this point, I want to invite Sonia Carabel to speak. You have three minutes.
Hi, my name is Sonia Carabel, and I am a researcher with United Here Local 2850, which represents the workers at the Hilton Garden Inn as well as at the Hyatt House and other hotels around the East Bay. And I call upon you to reverse your decision on the renovations and to save this ballroom facility, which is important not only to the workers at this, at the Hilton Garden Inn, but also to the Emeryville community at large. I acknowledge that the letter that I submitted initially does have some things that are no longer relevant, given that the use permit has been uncovered. That does change some of the assumptions that I made in the initial letter, and at the time that I submitted it, I had been told that we thought that it was just permitted by Wright at the time. But, so, one, one of the changes is that I agree that it is not non-conforming, it is a conforming use, because it qualifies under the exemption of the, of uses that are, are no longer permitted in the zoning, they're not conditionally permitted, but they have an existing use permit from before. However, that exemption, section 9-51003F, states that other, that they may be expanded, but other modifications to such a use beyond what was originally approved shall be subject to the provisions of these planning regulations. So I believe that, given that this is not a simple expansion, but rather a conversion, which by the way, I believe that this is, is in fact a development, given that conversion was one, conversion is listed under the definition of developments, and conversion, convert is the word that was used in the staff's presentation, so I do believe it qualifies as a development. And I also believe that within that context, it's not simply an expansion, but rather exchanging one function for another, be it accessory or be it primary. I do, I think that it therefore merits the consideration and does require the finding for putting a single use on a mixed-use zone, even if it was already a single use, it still requires that finding because you're making a change to this use. And so that, that finding is that it is infeasible to have more than one use on the mixed-use zoning, and I don't believe that it merits that finding, I think it is feasible. The other, the other findings that I believe that you cannot make in this case are around the mix of uses in Emeryville. There is really no such other space to have such large gatherings in Emeryville, especially with a unique view of the beautiful marina. And as such, I think that this is really an opportunity for the Planning Commission to embrace its role as trying to balance all of the spaces that you want to have in Emeryville. And, you know, we've just heard about the profit reasons why, you know, maybe they'll be able to get a little more profit out of rooms, guest rooms, but I think the role of the Planning Commission is to consider the larger community benefits and what this space actually does for all of Emeryville. So thank you for your time.
Thank you. All right, and we have Cheristelle Tigong. All right, and you have three minutes as well.
Hello, thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak tonight. I'm Cheristelle. I've been a banquet server at the Hilton Garden Inn for 15 years, and I would basically like to explain to you why this event space is really important to not just the community of Emeryville, but also to the, the East Bay in general. I've seen many events, weddings, debuts, cantoneries, birthday parties, retirement parties, and family reunions, and many other social events that have taken place in the top of the Bay, not just the dock of the Bay, but particularly the top of the Bay. It's, the view is not comparable to the view that's in the dock of the Bay. You get a view, a full view of Emeryville, Berkeley, Oakland, and San Francisco well, and the bridges as well. So over the past 15 years, I've heard many stories from mothers, fathers, they have said that they've had their daughter's debut, they said they've had their debut there because that's a facility where they've gotten married, so they've carried on the tradition of having the space used because they remember, it's, it's part of their memories. And I remember an event that I had last year, it was a hundredth birthday celebration, and the guests of honor remembered many of the staff, and she said she remembered us from her 90th birthday. And then at the end of the event, she told us that she would like to see us in 10 more years for her 110th birthday. So that, I think, is a very important part of why the facility should remain as an event space as opposed to sleeping rooms. And I'd also like to emphasize that we've also had many local churches throughout the Bay Area. They have had their fundraisers, they have had their Brent celebrations there, and I've seen them throughout the many years, and we've just, as staff, we've actually developed a lot of relationships with them. And also too, on June 6, 2016, Bernie Sanders held a conference that was aired on C-SPAN the day before the California primaries. And without naming any actual bigger businesses due to privacy concerns, I do want to describe some of the larger repeat businesses that we've had at the Hilton Garden Inn. We've had an online retailer from Emeryville that has held their conferences and many of their annual employee celebrations there. We've also had a tech company from Berkeley, they have had their annual conferences there, and I just remember that her, one of our, the contact at the end of the event saying it's going to be sad not to see us next year because they, they heard that the event space was going to be closing. And we've also had a construction company from Oakland that has been having their celebration, their employee celebration there for many years, and he's requested us many times throughout the years. And basically, I just want to thank you for the opportunity to let me speak, and it's just a sad knowing that there is a chance that many other people won't get the opportunity to enjoy and create memories of the top of the Bay. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. We have a final speaker here. This is Elijah Escobell, the appellant. I want to invite you up to speak.
Thank you, Commission, for taking the time and listening to and moving this to a public hearing, asking you guys to please review, reverse your decision and not let this ballroom be eliminated. It's an asset to the East Bay. Like my wife said, that there are many memories there. We got married in that ballroom about eight years ago. There are just, there's just spaces that speak to the heart, and that's also why I put the appeal. I have coworkers that this is their main source of income. Yes, there will be more jobs for housekeepers, but it's still a takeaway in the overall meeting space of the hotel. You cannot compare a box with no windows that's on the lobby level, similar to the courtyard Marriott, there is no fourteenth floor. Same thing with if you go across through the Hyatt House, they have suites, but there is no fourteenth floor. People come for the view, and I understand that's the reason why RLJ wants to change those to more sleeping rooms. You get the view, so they don't, if they had the opportunity, if they only wanted more sleeping rooms, why not convert the downstairs meeting space? We'd be fine with that. The driver and the business that sells itself is the view of our Beatles of City of Emeryville, of the Bay Bridge, and without it, it's not just 80%. Just because you can shoehorn a meeting downstairs, they're not going to have the same experience that they're getting right now. You're offering them something that's not liking kind, and that's just, you're going to lose. to lose business to the Doubletree, because that's the next place that I've heard, and they're like, oh, we're not going to see you guys next year, we're like, sorry, like, well, I guess we're going to have to go back to the Doubletree, okay? Or we're going to have to go and spend a lot more money at the convention center at Oakland. We don't like doing, because we feel like we get lost at a big place like that. We feel the personal attention that you guys have given us for the last couple of years. That's why we moved our conference from Oakland or from San Francisco, because you guys have been there 15-plus years taking care of us. And I, that's it, thank you.
Thank you. All right, are there any other members of the public that would like to speak on behalf of this agenda item? All right, seen none, want to go ahead and close on public hearing. And at this point, we're opening up for comments from the commissioners. I'll begin with Commissioner Keller here to my left.
Thank you, Chair. I, I really appreciate the community's impassioned feel for this space. I actually have a connection there myself. My first involvement with the city of Emeryville happened at a city event, a charrette that was held in that space, and it is, it is a grand space and it's very beautiful. But I still contend that this is not a land use decision, and whether we maintain a place because it's beautiful and it's admired and loved, I don't think is the charter or the responsibility of the Planning Commission. This is a business decision of a business owner. I have to disagree that this is a non-conversion, that it is not a non-conversion, but it is a conversion of the main use of the hotel, so they're just taking what they already do primarily, and they're adding more of it. And so I think that is completely, and it is not a new development, it's just taking what they already do primarily and adding more of it. So I, I just can't make any findings that would make me reverse the director's approval of the minor use condition, because it is a business decision, and I don't think it's within the purview of the commission to make this.
Thank you. Vice Chair Thompson?
Yeah, thank you, I appreciate both the presentation as well as the heartfelt comments by the folks who have been using the space. I, I agree with many of Commissioner Keller's comments regarding the use characteristic and the, and really that this is, is sort of beyond our purview. I, I too would have trouble finding, developing any findings, so I will say that I would be in support of the, what the staff has already said.
Commissioner Barretta?
So I will actually have to disagree with the, my two fellow commissioners. I do think this is a land use decision. One of the findings that have to be made for, for this to move forward is that the proposed use as its proposed location will be, will provide a service or facility that will contribute to the general well-being of the surrounding neighborhood or community. I feel like the ballrooms, the, the ballroom space, space for any type of social gathering, for people to have their, you know, weddings, reunions, quinceañeras, whatever it may be, space for people to come together is extremely limited anywhere you go. And it's a valuable space that I think exceeds the value of, you know, the, the additional business, tax revenue, whatever economic benefit that the city will get from additional rooms in that space, the, the social benefit of having gatherings and having personal interactions, I think overrides any economic benefit that you can have, because those spaces are becoming less and less accessible for everybody, and I think it's part of the reason why we see a lot of the issues that we have in the country today, where we have this divisiveness, and, you know, it's, I think, due to the fact that you don't have people coming together face-to-face and, and having these kind of social interactions. So for that reason, I actually do believe that I would support denial, because I, I don't think that that finding can be made, because I, I outweigh the social benefits of gatherings, it, that outweighs any of the economic benefits, because we have lots of opportunities for having economic benefits throughout the city, but extremely limited opportunities to have spaces for us to gather together, and I think that that is extremely important for the health of everybody in the community.
Commissioner Donaldson?
Yes, I've really been struggling with this, because I too have spent time in that ballroom, and it really is a spectacular and unique asset to the community. It's a place where I've gone to nonprofit benefits, where I've gone to the same charrette the commissioner Keller was at, and I think replacing that, I don't think there is a place that replaces that in the city. So in terms of reducing the overall balance of uses, taking away this unique facility is something that I think is really difficult to support. I do think that it is a development, because in the definition in our planning code, that's development definition includes an alteration, any change, addition, or modification in construction or appearance. It seems like that's a development issue there, so that, that's the case. The one that I'm really struggling with is the accessory use definition, considering that there are other spaces that are not sleeping spaces in this hotel, that that's still in its single use and that, but at this point, I'm thinking that I would have a hard time finding that it is creating an overall balance of uses, given how unique the, the space is.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Sohane?
Thank you for all the presenters, and I, I really see the emotion that the public brings in about the experiences that are created on, on, in that meeting space slash ballroom. But having said that, I agree with the comments made by Commissioner Keller and Commissioner Thompson. Just looking at, at the issues that were brought up, and looking at the directors or staff's response to those, I do not see an issue with, with this particular permit, and hence I, I support the resolution, approving the director's approval. Thank you.
All right, are there any further comments from my fellow commissioners? No? Okay, so for, for this piece here, I too agree with the majority of my colleagues. I, while I do think this is a special place in our community, I don't feel as though this is a decision that, that we should be making. The, 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 the business that has purview over what, what their business model is, I think that they should be, be able to make the choice. So I would be in agreement with the director's decision to move forward with this. And so that's where I stand, I don't have any, I, I want to thank the, the community for coming in and speaking on behalf of this. It takes a lot to come up and, and to, to appeal something like this, and I don't want that to go unignored, right? And so I appreciate that you came and spoke on behalf of this, and that you, you came tonight, so thank you. That said, this is an action item, so we, we do have to move forward with a decision on this. Are there any other comments from the commissioners before we do that? Okay, so at this point, we have two resolutions that we can move forward with.
I would like to make a motion.
Okay.
I would like to make a motion to deny the minor conditional use permit, because I believe finding D cannot be made, for the reasons that I stated previously.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor, do you have a second?
A second, yeah.
So I have a question about process. If, if there is an interest in the denial, what is the process for developing resolution?
Well, we would request the commission's direction on what you would like the finding or findings to say. I will point out, I'm not, I believe Navar may have said this in their presentation, but in order to deny, you only really need to make one finding. In order to approve, you have to make all the findings. In order to deny, you need to be able to just not make one. More than one is preferable, but you really only have to not be able to make one. And we would ask the commission's direction as to what that one or more finding should say.
I would add the consistency with the general plan, in terms of diversity of uses.
Staff needs you to articulate what evidence in the record supports the finding that you're making, and really your rationale behind not making that finding.
Commissioner Barretta?
So, I'm a little bit confused about how it works. If I can't make the finding, I have to make the argument for why that finding can't be made, is that right?
Yes, that's a good summary.
Well, right. I mean, one possibility is you could give us general direction, and we could bring it back to your next meeting more fully fleshed out.
So I'm wondering if this is an option, would it, because I feel like the ballroom is an important space to be saved for the benefit and well-being of the community, would it be possible to revisit the conditional use permit so that, you know, the, the applicants have an opportunity to convert the storage spaces and not the ballroom, because the conversion of that space is what I believe makes it, makes it not possible to make finding D?
I think that would be up to the applicant. They'd have to decide if they wanted to modify their application.
It's also, sorry, go ahead.
Sorry, go ahead.
Go ahead.
I, I guess I, I, if that's the case, then I will try and make my argument for not being able to make the finding. So I'm going to just read the finding one more time so that it can help me with this argument. So it says, "The proposed use at its proposed location will provide a service or facility that will contribute to the general well-being of the surrounding neighborhood or community." I believe that the, removing the ballroom would be detrimental to the well-being of the neighborhood and the community, because there are lack of spaces for community gatherings in the city of Emeryville and in the Bay Area in general, that are accessible both to our community and to our surrounding communities, and converting that space to additional rooms would rob the city of something, a, a benefit that the community has.
Would you like to include anything about the unique aspect of that space in your finding?
Sure, I think that it, it's warranted, given, I, I've actually never been into the space, so I don't know what it looks like, but for me, the bigger issue is just having that community space available. So I, you know, I, I would maybe turn to maybe another of my fellow commissioners that actually has been there to maybe, can, can she contribute to this argument?
Sure.
Okay, because I've never been there, so it's hard for me to actually make a case for that.
Commissioner Donaldson?
I think that it is not consistent with the general plan in that it does not support an overall balance of uses, because it removes a cultural destination and decreases the range of amenities and services necessary to support a vibrant community.
Okay, we can work with that, I think.
Okay, so we have a motion on the floor, it's been seconded by Commissioner Donaldson. So at this point, I think that we should move forward for a vote on that.
All right. On the motion to basically deny the application to pass the resolution for denial with the finding as articulated by Commissioners Barrera and Donaldson, Commissioner Barrera?
Aye.
Commissioner Donaldson?
Aye.
Commissioner Keller?
No.
Commissioner Sohane?
No.
Commissioner Young is absent, Vice Chair Thompson?
No.
Chair Guerrero?
No.
Two ayes, four noes, the motion fails.
Okay, so we, at this point, have an opportunity to move forward with the second resolution?
I'll make the motion that we go ahead with the director's approval and pass that resolution.
That's moved by Commissioner Keller, do you have a second?
I'll second it.
Seconded by Commissioner Sohane.
Ready to vote on that?
Can we have a vote, please?
Sure. Commissioner Barrera?
No.
Commissioner Donaldson?
No.
Commissioner Keller?
Aye.
Commissioner Sohane?
Aye.
Commissioner Young is absent, Vice Chair Thompson?
Aye.
And Chair Guerrero?
Aye.
Four ayes, two noes, the motion is approved, the director's approval of this minor conditional use permit is upheld, and this decision is final, it may not be appealed to the City Council.
Thank you, Charlie. All right, at this point, I want to call recess, we'll, we'll take a five-minute break, returning at 8:40. We'll take a five-minute break, returning at 8:40. So, we're gonna return to reset from recess here. It is 8:42, and we are moving back to study session item 7.2, this is the Public Market Master Sign Program, and we have a presentation from Navarre.
Hello again.
Hello.
Hello. So, as you said, this is for the Public Market Master Sign Program Study Session. So, this is at the Marketplace PUD along Chalamet Street. All the places that are included in this master sign program are shown here in red. So, for background, in 2005, the Planning Commission approved a master sign program for the public market, and that included directional signage, project identity signs, and site guidelines for the tenants. And in 2011, that master sign program was updated with new designs for the directional and project identity. In 2016, the relocation of Chalamet Street necessitated the existing directional and project identity signs be replaced. So, in 2016, an application for a new directional sign program, which is processed as a major sign permit for directional signs only, came to the Planning Commission and was approved. And a condition of approval for that was that a new master sign program for tenant signage needed to come to fruition to replace what was no more. So, due to the design delays and achieving final development approvals for parcel B, that development of a master sign program was put on hold until today, here we are today, to review this proposed master sign program for tenants. So, the fine standards for tenants are for parcel A, parcel B, parcel G, and the public market, and the brick building behind that, and the tower building. So, it creates standards for establishing maximum, maximum allowable sign area, defines permitted sign materials and allowed sign types, but it does not dictate content. The whole idea is that as tenants come and go, there's something consistent for them to go to, and it helps everybody, it helps staff, it helps tenants, helps property owners. So, here are those spaces that were shown in red before, this is showing the actual tenant spaces that will be covered. And so, it allows, this proposed master sign program allows for seven different sign types. And so, each of those have designated specifications of lighting, materials, and locations depending on which part, which parcel they're being located on. So, also, it provides, well, I kinda talked about, providing standards for each sign type. And it also provides a site plan, which you already saw, typical building elevations and allowances for temporary signage. So, it does not propose specific sign types, and as required, there is a table with a computation of allowable sign area for each tenant. So, as you're probably familiar with reviewing many signs here, there's a one-to-one ratio of tenant frontage space with one square footage of sign area. So, the master sign program cannot exceed that, this defines what that is. So, when tenants come in, they already know what their maximum allowable sign area is. This is what that table looks like. It's not cute, but it's really efficient. And if you zoom in to look at it a little bit closer, you can see it designates the unit type, its location, and specifies where in the sign program you can find it, and also the permitted sign area. And then, below that is a snippet of one of the references in the table showing exactly those details. So, here's a sample, as you know, I said there were seven sign types, I did not include all of them in this presentation, although I do have the full document available to bring up onto the screen if you like. But, as an example, here's what it has for awning signs, where it talks about the sign area and materials and the allowed type of lighting, and gives some picture examples.
So, before we move on, go back to that, I just want to get to the square footage. And look at that, the Godivas sign?
Yeah.
There's an awning sign and a building sign.
Yep.
You'd use both of those signages to come up with, they can't exceed their square footage because of both those signs?
Okay, so, the, thank you for, that's a good clarification, thank you. So, the, the maximum sign area is for all signs cumulatively. So, if one of those is five square feet and one of them is 10 square feet, okay, that's under their, say, 25-square-foot allotment. However, if one of those was, let's say the wall sign was permitted to be 20 square feet, okay? Theoretical circumstance here, okay? But their maximum sign area was only 15 square feet because it was a very small facade, they still couldn't exceed 15 square feet. Does that?
Wait, they could or they can't exceed?
They could not. Whatever the maximum allotted spaces for that parcel is, is that. So, if you have a very small facade, and they're saying, hey, you have all these different opportunities available to you, that's great, but you need to figure out what combination you're going to have, what you want to focus on for your tenant space.
To stay within that square footage allowable.
You got it. Yes, you cannot exceed that even if, like, you can have different sign types. You can't have them all at once if it does not work for your frontage. So, another sign type would be a blade sign type. So, this wasn't the example of a sign that says maximum of 20 square feet, right? So, if you have a narrow facade, that may or may not be a good option for you, but you get to decide that depending on your situation. And then, there's the sign standards. So, this is talking about those specifications for each sign type. So, for the awning sign, a maximum 18-inch valence of the hanging part, a valence is probably a better term than hanging part of the awning. You know, the door-window sign's not exceeding 25% of the area, temporary signs not being larger than 15 square feet.
So, Navarre, my reading of our sign ordinance is, is that the door-window signs on the glass are included in the aggregate area, is that?
That is correct.
Okay, so here, they're saying it's not.
Oh, that's the lighting that's not applicable?
No, there's a parentheses one on all these saying, "Subject to a maximum aggregate," and this door-window doesn't include that?
That is incorrect. That, that should be.
That should be in there.
Right. What's not, what's, I need to go back and look at how they have their definition, but what would not be subject, subject to that is if you have, like, credit card signs, like menus, that would not be subject to it, right? But if you had stencil, that would absolutely be subject to it, so.
Okay.
Good catch.
Thanks.
Yeah. So, each of the parcels that we talked about has different locations that things might be allowed. So, this is showing potential location areas, and then sample of theoretical signage for that area. And they have that for each type of the building elevations here. So, we're just, like, walking through those real quick for examples, so you can get an idea of how that plays out. So, the findings for the Master Five programs, there's five of them, or six, pardon me, that they promote visual harmony, that it relates well with the building, it's compatible with the architecture and the surrounding area, that the total aggregate sign area, which we talked about quite specifically, is consistent with the sign regulations, that there's no more signage than is necessary, and that it has to comply with Emeryville planning regulations in general. And then, as the standard design review finding is for all design review projects. So, to be considered is if you have any feedback regarding the proposed master sign program, and do you think you'd be able to make the required findings for the master sign program? The applicant is here and is available for any questions you have this evening.
Great, thanks, Navarre. Are there any further questions for Navarre, as she's here from the Commission? Oh, all right.
I have one question.
Commissioner Sohane?
So, are the current signs on parcel G, are they compliant with this requirement that you just mentioned, one square feet for every one linear feet?
So, the signs that have been going in while we have not had a master sign program have been processed as minor sign permits instead.
Okay.
I have not done an assessment to see if the exact locations would be consistent with what's proposed. However, the way the regu, however, the way that the master sign program is proposed is quite flexible. So, my guess is that if they don't perfectly conform, that they largely would conform to this.
And if, if they don't, will, will they be changed, or are they, like, grandfathered?
They're there, yep. Yeah, we're not gonna make them change all the existing signs.
Okay, sounds good, thank you.
Commissioner Donaldson, did you have something to ask there?
Yeah, it just does seem that there are a few little places, aside from that one about the aggregate sign calculation, where there's some discrepancies with what's in our sign ordinances. The awning sign has a restriction that it lesser of 10 feet or 25%, and I don't think that that is covered. It says the awnings may run the, well, the sign area may be the whole, I'm reading this, the sign area may be the full length of the storefront. So, are we supposed to address all of these individual discrepancies, or are we just looking in general?
My understanding, and Charlie could correct me on this, is that for things such as how much, how the sign would need to be located on an awning, could be specific to the master sign program. But as long as it didn't exceed the square footage, would that be?
Let me see, I was just looking that up.
Yeah, in that exam, in that example, I believe I read that it had to be the lesser of 10 square feet or 25% of the awning area. So, if there's a divergence, is that something that needs to be corrected, or?
Well, okay, yeah, so it does say for the findings to approve a master sign program include that the total aggregate sign area allowed under the sign program for each individual establishment does not exceed that allowed by this other section, which basically is one square foot for linear foot of frontage, and that the proposed master sign program will comply with all applicable provisions of this article, including but not limited to standards for specific sign types and design principles. So, yeah, if it, if our code says something about how big an awning sign can be and the master sign program wants something bigger, it's not supposed to.
Yeah, I think that comes up a couple of times.
Right.
Okay.
Well, anything you have that you've found that you want to point out to us is fine, you don't necessarily have to take the Commission's time to do that if you have it written down, you can just give it to staff.
Also, I'll note that I, while I was making this presentation this evening, I noticed some minor errors in the, in this draft, so for example, where it says here, see page 25, I would think it's on page 23, there's some minor things like that that we routinely correct, but if that's something that you notice, as Charlie said, please help my eyes.
And if I may say, I think this is the reason we're having a study session, is to make sure this is all copacetic before we bring it back for your approval.
Do you have any questions here to my left? Nope. I have one question for clarification, Navarre, can you explain to us why parcel C and parcel F weren't included in the master sign?
Sure, so let's, let's find where that map is, so we're all on the same page of what those parcels are. So, parcel C and parcel F, parcel F isn't built yet, and my understanding from the design of that is it's intended to be one tenant, and master sign programs are designed for five or more tenancies. I understand in aggregate it is, but it didn't really seem pertinent when the building isn't even built yet to include that.
Well, excuse me if I may, not only is it not built, it doesn't have an FDP yet. They haven't even applied for an FDP yet, so.
Got it. And then, for parcel C?
For parcel C, that could be included if, if you would like, or it's one large tenant with one smaller tenant, and also didn't seem to be as relevant to these other buildings that have many tenants, with more high changeover probably.
So, what would happen there is the signs would just be processed as individual signs under the regular sign regulations.
Okay. We have another question from Commissioner Donaldson. I'm sorry, Commissioner Keller.
It's not, it's tagging on to yours, I think with the removal of the requirement for that to be a grocery store, that place could be subdivided, according to it. So, I think it would benefit us to tie this into this master sign program, because we have no idea what's going in there, and it could be three different locations as it stands now, so I don't see any reason why we shouldn't just tie it into this whole master sign program.
Thank you. Any other questions at this time for staff?
Yeah, just one question. So, did I hear you say that this program is valid for buildings with five or more establishments? Did you just?
They're, they're required under the planning regulations, so if you have a multi-tenant building that you're developing, then you need to get a master sign program for that.
So, on that note, is, is brick building considered as part of parcel G? Because brick building in itself has only two establishments as seen on table 3.1.
Right, I mean, I think to the same point that was just made, is that for parcel C, it doesn't have to be limited to that, I believe, and in previous times, a brick building has had more than that number, the applicant can clarify that, but I think there's.
Well, let me just chime in here, the five or more, it says a master sign program is required for all developments, including five or more retail tenant spaces, that would be the whole public market, it's not just an individual building of the public market. So, there's definitely five or more establishments in this whole complex.
Okay. All right, see no further questions from the Commission? Want to invite the applicant to come up and speak?
Hello, I'm Christopher from Hart Howerton. We don't have any additional further presentation for you, but I just sort of wanted to, I'm thanking Navarre for doing such a good job with presenting the scheme. And just to sort of reiterate that the, the major signage, like you might see at the corner of parcel C or parcel F, are not really part of this, they would come back to you as, as its own submission. And we're really just trying to have some guidelines that allow for some creativity, while, you know, kind of prohibiting anything too crazy. So, it's, it's, we'll fix some of those typos that you've already identified, and sort of just reiterate that I think the overall signage guidance, the sort of one square foot per lineal foot, is really sort of the major thing that guides so much of the signage. So, that's all we're just trying to do, thank you.
Thank you. I do have one question for you before you head out, and I want to invite Commissioners, if you have any questions for the applicant before I ask mine. Do I, are there any questions here? Yes, so I'll start with Commissioner Donald, Donald Thompson.
Whichever.
Sorry, Vice Chair Thompson.
It's okay. No, I just, I actually just had a question, and just to ask about what the character is, I mean, I know that the sign, you know, these, these sign guidelines are meant to maintain high-quality signage, but there's language in the document about the character, and I didn't know if you could articulate that more.
And I think generally what we're going for is something, something that is complementary to the character of the public market, which admittedly is eclectic. Ideally, we're looking for signage character that is, sort of matches our tenant character. So, ideally, they're unique tenants who are, where this is one of their first locations, ideally, they're sort of high-quality materials, artisan, interesting in, in material or shape or craftsmanship. It's difficult, we haven't required those things, nor have we looked to prohibit anything that the, the sign ordinance doesn't already. But the, the character of the public market is, is aspirational, I would say. But the character of the public market is aspirational, I would say.
Commissioner Keller?
We'll put our names over here. I had the same problem, so I don't understand.
It's me.
So, with the approval of parcel B, if that building were to be rented by a single tenant, how does this master sign program address identifying that single tenant, say on the top of the building like we see often out on the peninsula for the larger buildings? So, it might be a question more for staff. But does this master sign program address if, say Gilead wanted to take all nine stories and put their name on the building, what are we looking at in the sign program for that?
That's a good question. They would certainly need to follow, you know, follow the sign parameters.
But would that go through the master sign program?
I'm sorry, what was the scenario again?
So, I didn't read.
A single tenant in parcel B.
So, say Gilead took all nine stories of the new building that was just approved yesterday, the day before by city council, and they wanted to put their name, Gilead, on the top of the building. Does this cover that type of signage?
No.
No. Would it prohibit that?
No, it wouldn't be relevant to it. That would be a high-rise identification sign. And that would require planning commission approval, notwithstanding any master sign program. Unless you had a master sign program that covered the top of the building, which this one I don't believe does. Like, the master sign program for the towers does have, as you know, the provisions for the tops of those buildings, but this master sign program is not proposed to.
Any more questions here? Nope. Looking to my right.
I have a few questions. Can you actually go to slide 12, which has various establishments, if you can? Oh, sorry. I think the page numbering in the booklet that you provided is different. So, I do want to speak towards table 3.1, but I also want us to look at the math which shows where each of these individual establishments are.
Oh, okay. I'm trying to remember where I put that one. There we go.
Yeah, so just to be here for a second before we go to the table. It seems like if we take the example of parcel A, corner plots, for lack of a better term, corner establishments A1, A11, and A4, and A5 seem to have a larger amount of facade area. Is that correct?
Yes.
And if we look at table 3.1, it only seems like unit A1 and unit A11, the maximum permitted area reflects that higher amount, like 65 square feet and 88 square feet, compared to A4 and A5 where that number is significantly lower. So I'm just trying to understand if there is a particular logic why those numbers have been kept minimal or are those just typos?
They're not typos. What we're trying to do is be as precise we can with as much information as we can. So, A1 does get, it's essentially like three bays as it turns the building. The bays are, you know, around 27 feet each. A4 is 44 feet and that turns a corner. A5, although it turns a corner, that's actually where a stair goes. There's sort of a grand stair that comes down the building. So, we colored in the footprint of the unit, but the actual frontage of it is less than appears.
Okay, yeah, I see. If you look closely, it looks like there is some indication of a stair, which was not super clear, you know, when you look from a distance. And then, is that, I'm guessing that's the same for parcel B as well, where even though there are some corner plots, they all seem to have similar maximum permitted sign area? Like, B1, B13?
Are corners.
Yeah, but they have similar maximum permitted area as the other internal units.
I think B13 is not a facade or storefront, it's a solid wall in that particular unit. It goes up to the parking structure or part of the building. That's changed so much, I can't remember now. I don't think it's a window or storefrontage type thing. I think it's a solid wall. At least on B13 and B1, one might have some similar things to the.
Yeah, and I think we can sort of go over this with a fine-tooth comb and make those corrections as needed. This was actually drawn before parcel B was approved, so we're happy to update that. Very excited to.
Yeah, I was just curious, you know, because I didn't pay as much attention in terms of what it looks like just from, you know, like looking at from a corner parcel point. It seemed like it should have more area than it does. Then, the other question that I had was that in the examples that you have provided later on in the presentation, let's see if I can pull one of these. If you go to, say, the slide after the table.
I'm sorry, after which one?
After table 3.1, yeah, that particular slide. It seems like there are certain types of sign that are not shown in this example, such as canopy or awning sign. So, is there a particular reason where you are trying to prevent those on certain parcels? Or is this just representative?
Yeah, I think the idea is we're trying to be as illustrative as we can with all the information that we have. This is a future building. We do have, there is an FDP. So, we're trying to be consistent with what's shown in the FDP primarily.
Okay, but there is an opportunity for an establishment to have, say, a canopy or an awning sign here?
I believe there would be. It was not part of the approved design, but.
Okay. Alright, thank you.
Okay. I have one question about the parcels B.
Yes.
In the master sign program, I'm not seeing anything that refers back to the art installation that will be on that particular building. So, my question is about the consideration that you'll take to ensure that the signage doesn't, like, take over that part of the building so we can still appreciate the art that's there.
The idea for the building signage is that the signage happens sort of at the retail level, at a lower level, sort of, say, bottom 20 feet. And the art zone that's been targeted with Dorka's group is from sort of 20 feet up to 60 feet up as you go around. So, they're in different zones of the building. I don't imagine there would be much interaction between the two.
Okay. Are there any more questions from the commission? Commissioner Donaldson?
Yeah, I did have one on the 3.5 text about the lighting. It says low voltage LED and other high-efficiency lighting is encouraged wherever appropriate. When would it not be appropriate?
If someone didn't want lighting?
Oh, well, I mean, if, but your care, okay.
We'll wordsmith that.
Okay. Any more questions at this point? Alright. So, this being a study session, I want to go ahead and open it up for a public comment for any members in the public that would like to speak on behalf of this item. See none. I'm going to go ahead and close public comment. And open it up for deliberation from the commission for any final thoughts. Commissioner Sohane?
Thank you for the presentation. And overall, I think I like the look and feel of the various palette of signs that have been shown out here. I think it's always good to have, you know, like a vocabulary present to you, but still give individual establishments some liberty to choose what sign works for them. Having guidelines such as the ones that are shown in the document, maximum permitted sign area, definitely allows to, you know, like, curtail establishments going crazy in terms of what they want to show. And I really appreciate that you put the thought in here. A couple of comments that I wanted to make were associated with the temporary signage. So I did see, you know, like temporary signage on the sidewalks. However, there was no specification or requirement of where on the sidewalk they need to be placed. I think having that additional layer of information, you know, you know, like whether it's in the furnishing zone, whether it's close to the establishment, might be helpful just so as to limit where and how they can be placed. And it's not an impediment to pedestrians as well as people in wheelchairs. And then, the other item, you know, on the context of temporary signage, the other item that could also be explored is to limit how many signs can be placed along the entire block, just so that it doesn't cause visual clutter and, you know, like prevents opportunities for other street furniture. And then, one comment that I wanted to make was regarding the, if there can be some additional thought that could be put in for signage that is fronting the courtyard area as well as the 63rd Street, Shade Street area, or whatever that particular street is. You know, having, like, requiring various establishments to have blade signs, say for instance, so that they are much more pedestrian-focused and really add to the character of the place. So that's something that I would encourage the designers to look into. Thank you.
Commissioner Donaldson?
I think that the overall look that you're conveying is really nice. I think it is aspirational. You're showing good materials, interesting design. And I think that it's a pretty thorough while still flexible document. I do think that the lighting, we need to require low, high-efficiency lighting. And there are a few little things that I will pass on to Navarre about areas where I think that might be exceeding what our sign ordinance allows. But overall, I think it looks great.
Commissioner Barretta?
I actually don't really have any comments on this. I think it's a pretty attractive sign program. And if it works for staff, then I think it's, you know, one of the major things to make sure that this is an easily usable document for staff. So, not very much in comments on, from my part.
Thank you. Vice Chair Thompson?
Sure, just a couple of comments about, you know, I'd just love it if you could articulate, you know, the character a little bit more just to help people. But I think I agree with the sense of trying to keep it flexible. So, just to put a little more thought into that. And then, you know, the other comment really is about the materials. I noticed that some sections are, you know, have a materials list, other sections don't. And that there's sort of some general language about metals, glass, metal, leaf, porcelain, and then in the bottom of approved, there's wood, you know. So there's some dissonance around what exactly the intent of these materials sections are and, you know, if they're appropriate per the criteria. Just make it so it's easy to understand and consistent. I think that's my comment. And then, I think overall, the examples are great and I really like it where you have, I like the illustrative character a lot. I would say you have an opportunity to add a section to the awning one because I was surprised that, given that there's a projection, that there isn't, that doesn't have a little section with it or some other sort of graphic component. So that, I think those are my comments.
Commissioner Keller?
Overall, I think it's really good. I like the eclectic nature. I like the eclectic nature of the whole public market and I think the sign program continues through with that. I agree with the chair that the art area is kind of, and it might be clear, but I think we might want to look into some verbiage that says that the signage should not impede into the art area and just make sure that that area stays clean. I agree with Commissioner Donaldson that there should be a statement that where lighting is used, it should be low voltage or high efficiency. That make that again clear. Any type of sandwich board signage, I think there should be some controls put in where those can be placed so they do not impede. There are a couple of very serious pinch points on the, along building G in particular. There are some really narrow sidewalks. And so I think we need to make sure that wherever we put those sandwich boards, that they need to make sure there's a certain amount of clearance for those. For temporary signs, I'd like to see that this, if it's possible, I don't know if we're allowed to do this or not, but I'd like to see that they have a stated limited time. I think of going-out-of-business signs that you see sit around for six or eight months. So I think if a temporary sign is posted, that it needs to say it can be posted for 30 days or whatever. I'd like to see some controls on that. And the last two I have, I want to get the commission's thoughts and opinions on, but I feel that parcel C needs to be part of the master sign program. I just think it is part of the project and it's, now that it has become a subdivided unit, it needs to be treated as such, so it needs to become part of that. So I'd like to get the commission's feedback on that. And also, I'd like to get their feedback on the high-rise sign for parcel B. I can just see, you know, someone, there's, we treat that building now as four-sided. There's the railroad side, the north-south, and the west side. And I'd like to know if the commission would want to approach that separately or if we want to include the high-rise part of that building as part of the master sign program.
Thank you, Commissioner Keller. So there are two questions there that Commissioner Keller's proposing to the commission. Does anybody want to lead comments on that?
Yeah, I can lead. I also sort of looked at the plan and thought, what about parcel C? Why isn't it included? So I think I would support that. The other, I'm okay keeping the high-rise part of the master sign process. I don't think it's needed in here. Others may have different opinions. And then I would also just support the lighting comments of the commissioners earlier.
Commissioner Barretta?
I do think it makes sense to have parcel C on there. The master, or the high-rise sign, I think would be appropriate to leave the way that it is now in terms of the process that it goes through. But it does make sense to me to include parcel C in there.
Any comments here to my right?
I agree.
Okay, in agreement. Parcel C, yeah, yes, being included?
Parcel C should be included in the same type. For the other one, since this document is exclusively, is my understanding correct that this document is only for these parcels that are being developed? So in that case, would parcel B the only parcel which would have a high-rise sign? Or would other parcels potentially have some, you know, single-tenant sign that they could?
Tower building has the ability. It has Guitar Center on it.
There's only one other building that is tall enough for a high-rise sign, which is the existing Public Market Office Tower. And I believe it has signs at the top.
Guitar Center and Public Market.
Yeah, and if those are ever modified, depending on what the modification is, they would have to come to the commission under the current regulations for a high-rise sign.
Right, so because that's so specific, it makes sense to keep that as part of the high-rise sign? That's my opinion.
I agree with Commissioner Sohane. I do have some apprehension in terms of even adding a high-rise sign to this building, given the dramatic art that we want to include in the building. So, I would definitely want to have that come to the commission at any point. Parcel C, I would like to see that included in the master plan as well. And I think that you all did a great job in terms of including the feedback that I had. So that's all I have at this point. Thank you. Alright. Does staff or the applicant need any further direction in terms of our feedback?
I'd just like to make one point. I think the comments that Commissioner Donaldson was planning to give to staff were just of the nature of correcting typos. Is that right?
Or consistency with the signage?
Consistency with the sign ordinance about percentages of coverage.
Right, just to point out the errors, yeah. Because we're concerned that it could be Brown Act violation if you're making substantive comments to staff by, you know, writing.
Oh, okay.
Can you clarify what that would mean? Charlie, they call-
Charlie, like, how should we give you that feedback?
I'll defer to the city attorney.
Okay.
If it's like a typo, you know, I don't know, you misspelled, Public Market or something like that, that's one thing, but I, I'm not clear on the nature of the comments, in which case this is the best forum to give the comments.
Okay. Would you like to include that feedback at this time, Commissioner Donaldson?
Looking, I don't know.
I guess maybe the question is, do you think that your comments are substantive, or are they?
If there's any doubt, they should be given.
Find them again. There was one on the awning sign, which, well, there was one on the table that said that the door and window signs would not, it didn't say that they would be included in the aggregate calculation. So I think that, that was a mistake. I don't know whether it was a typo or whether it was an intentional mistake. There is one that, four point one point one, there's reference to overhead wall signs shall not exceed seventy-five percent of the width of the storefront, and I'm unclear about whether the code is, is referring to the same type of sign, but there's a reference to twenty-five feet or the less, the lesser of twenty-five feet or seventy-five percent. There's, there's some calculation there that I thought was inconsistent. What I mentioned about the awning sign before, where that said lesser of ten square feet or twenty-five percent of the awning area. Blade sign, it says maximum of twenty square feet. I believe our code says fifteen square feet. Yeah, yeah, the aggregate. And the code, the sign area on the door-window sign says maximum of twenty-five percent of door-window glazed area, and the code says one per window or door, not more than ten percent of the area. So there's just, it's those kinds of consistence, inconsistencies that I just noted because there was a lot of detail, and I was just trying to look through.
Is there any global direction that you might have for the applicant that would capture these comments? Because given that these are the calculation numbers?
If I may, I can make a suggestion?
Yeah.
That they go through and confirm everything, compare what they're proposing to our sign ordinance, and make sure that there's not inconsistencies, because she's finding a lot of those inconsistencies.
Navarre?
I think staff can assist with that.
Yeah, I was going to suggest that, two things. One is that I will go back and check the program against the, the regulations to make sure they're consistent and so to ease some of that anxiety. So thank you for pointing that out to me, but I'll also go through every single item and double-check it. And then also, I just wanted to let folks know that several people brought up concerns about the A-frame style signs being problematic from people tripping over them and access there and pinch points. Anything that's in the public right-of-way has to get a permit from Public Works in addition to whatever's in the master sign program. So if you're putting a temporary sign on a sidewalk that's in the public right-of-way, just so you know, that has to go through Public Works, and they check those locations to make sure that they're appropriate. If it's on private property, so if, say, it was between the tower building and the brick building, so that would be on private property, Public Works does not check for that, and we can be more specific about that, of course. But I just want to let people know that that's something that the city's on top of.
Commissioner Keller?
Just, the, the situation I think of is, and I, I'm pretty familiar with that, is PETA's often puts signs out, and they're in the public right-of-way, and there's not an enforcement thing. So I think that the master sign program reiterates that and makes it clear?
Sure.
That it gives us more bite when we're trying to enforce that.
Sure, absolutely.
All right. Any final comments here? Okay. I think that, so at this point, we've given you direction. It sounds as though you asked some clarifying questions, and you have the direction that you need at this point. Great.
True, thank you.
Excellent. You're welcome, of course. Okay, so we're going to move on. We're moving on to the public hearing, eight point two, public storage signs and facade, and I believe this is Navarre again.
Let's take a moment to set up here for you.
Sign guru.
All right, here we are, public storage signs at sixty-five oh one Shellmount Street. This is not a study session this evening. This is here for your review. So here we are at public storage at the corner of Shellmount and Sixty-Fifth Street on the north side of town, just west of the railroad tracks. So the proposal is to reface an existing illuminated monument sign to replace recently removed illuminated west and east-facing signs at the top of the large building there, to have a new non-illuminated wall sign on the wall-facing Shellmount Street on the north side of the property, installing a non-illuminated directional ground sign at the parking entrance, and that would also, by the way, remove an existing awning at that public storage area, and then adding an orange stripe of paint along the top of both the taller building and the wall-facing Shellmount Street. So this is a major sign permit because the wall signs on the taller building are located higher than twenty-five feet above grade and are larger than fifty square feet each. This is being processed with a design review title because the proposal includes the orange paint stripe, and the orange paint stripe serves as both a background for the proposed, proposed signs as well as a new design element for the building. So this is being processed as a major design review permit. So this is a summary table of the proposed signs and locations. A little bit hard to see here, but has the dimensions and the size for each sign. Altogether, it's about four hundred and twelve square feet of signage. So here's the existing public storage monument sign and the proposal to reface it, and a night view there. And so this is at the corner of Sixty-Fifth and Shellmount. And then here are the big triggers for the, the major, right? It's taller than twenty-five feet and larger than fifty feet. And so there's one view, and you can see that orange stripe behind the sign. And then here's another view from Sixty-Fifth Street, and you can see the old signs on the existing elevation, they've actually been removed at this point, and then the proposed. And then on the other side of the same building, so this is the west side there. And this is at the top of view of the night and day view of that, and then at the bottom is, as you're approaching it from further away on Sixty-Fifth Street, so when you're closer to the freeway. So the signs are designed on a rail behind them that the orange paint will match the orange on that rail, and they project a little bit from the wall, just slightly, and the letters all illuminate white at night. Moving on to the new sign proposed for Shellmount Street, this doesn't exist right now. You can see it's just blank right now, but proposed, it's at the end. Because the property is so long, these are over three hundred feet away from the signs on Sixty-Fifth Street. So if you're approaching southbound from the north, you can't really see those other signs when you're at this area, and the sign, I believe, is only about seventeen square feet. And there's another view of that. You can see the orange paint behind and the white contrasting sign, and that does not illuminate. And then these are some small sounds, signs, pardon me, hopefully they don't make sounds when you're approaching, just to help people find the entrance, and the awning that's pictured there would be removed. So the major design review findings for signs, I believe you're fairly familiar with, that they're necessary due to the nature of establishment and its location, that they're no larger than necessary, and that they comply with planning regulations and design principles, and that they're with the visual character of the area, and the signs of course have to be readable and relate well to the buildings and architectural features. And it's the same design review findings, that it's consistent with the general plan and urban design goals and policies, it's consistent with the design guidelines, and they're of a high quality. So staff recommends approval. The applicant has been waiting patiently this whole evening through many adventures, and is also available to answer any questions, but does not have her own separate presentation tonight.
Great, thank you, Navarre.
Sure.
So want to open up our questions from the commission to staff? Commissioner Keller?
Is it my understanding, just by living in the neighborhood, that the orange paint is already in place?
I believe some of the orange plate, paint is already in place, and I'm not sure it's the correct color.
Yeah, I don't, I saw.
You need to look.
Okay, yes. When I placed the signs for the notice out at the site, I did notice that it had been painted, and I don't know, I tried to get clarification from, I'm representing the sign company. It's a different paint contractor, and my guess is they were probably a little overzealous and did the paint, not realizing that they were still waiting on approvals.
Approvals, yeah. So the, so the painting is part of the approvals, right? Yeah, okay.
I forgot that there is this lovely design board here, so I'll pass that up here so you can look at that closer up, and I'm not sure that that same color that's there now is what this is, so.
Quick question on the night, the pedestal sign. It looked from the presentation as though it's lit.
You meant the monument sign?
Monument sign, that's what I meant.
Yes, it's currently illuminated, and it's proposed to be illuminated as well.
Okay, and so how, how is, I mean, is it, it's just internal lit?
Yes, correct, correct.
The graphics a little hard to tell what's going on.
Yeah, yeah, I've noticed in general with processing many, many sign permits, that we ask for a nighttime rendering, and that sometimes it's difficult for applicants to portray.
Okay.
You have any questions, Commissioner Barretta?
No questions.
Okay. Questions here?
No questions.
Okay. My, my question also related to Commissioner Keller's. I did notice that the, it's painted already. The, the colors that are illustrated in the packet that we received look much brighter than what's already there.
Yeah.
And so this is the actual color here.
Correct.
So, so will it be repainted? Or is it already painted the color that it's been?
I'm going to take my best guess and say that it's painted the color it's supposed to be, which I think is supposed to be that, that orange that you see there.
This color here.
Yeah, it, it's, sometimes it's hard, you know, with paint, it, you know, and that's kind of the vinyl color that they use, but it's supposed to be a match to the same orange that's on the face of the monument sign, and it's going to be, you know, obviously the, the raceway behind the letters, we painted to match the background, so it kind of disappears, and you wouldn't even see that. It would just look like white letters on the thing. But it was repainted, and that's the new proposed color.
I see.
It's not as bright as it looks in the, in the printouts, just because that's, you know, when we print out the drawings, it just shows as a very bright orange.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
Can I, can I ask a staff question about the procedural reality of it being painted before we approve it? Is this, is this something we should consider in our deliberations or not?
I suppose you could. If you decide not to approve it, I think you could direct them to paint it out. I believe the photographs show that it was formerly gray, so if you want them to go back to the gray, you could require them to do that. Paint is, is a kind of a tricky thing. We normally, I mean, we bring this to you primarily because of the signs. Paint doesn't require a building permit, and while technically any exterior change to the appearance of a building triggers design review, people paint their houses, and we don't make them get design review, you know? So it, it's questionable whether we would have required them to get design review if all they did was put that paint on the building.
Thank you, Charlie. Do we have any more questions here at this time from the commission? Okay, so I want to open it up for public comment, for any members of the public that like to speak on behalf of this item. We have an empty house at this point, and that's, I'm going to go ahead and close public comment, and...
Chair of public hearing.
Public hearing, I'm sorry, thank you. And we open up for deliberation, and I'll begin with Commissioner Sohane on my right.
I don't have any specific comments. I recommend approval of the project.
Commissioner Donaldson?
I don't have problems with the signs, given that we have the dimmable provision in our conditions of approval. I have not seen the new paint. I didn't go to look because I didn't think anyone had done this yet, so based on the images in the package, I was going to say I can't find that consistent with the design of the neighborhood and all that, but I feel like I'm at a disadvantage because I haven't seen what it's actually looking like.
Thank you. Commissioner Barretta?
No comments, I'm in support of approving this.
Commissioner, or Vice Chair Thompson?
Another procedural question about the ability to go look at it. Can we continue this?
You certainly have that option.
Okay.
I will note your March agenda, I mean, February and March agendas are pretty full, but
Sure.
there's nothing to prevent you from continuing this if you wish to.
Okay. I think, and I think the, the only reason I look at this is because I did, I did have a question about sort of the decorative quality of the gray, and not, not because it's all that beautiful, but because it does, you know, have a, have a vertical element that this doesn't have. And I found that a little bit strange, how they, it was just like painted right over that. So I think that was my only comment, is that it just seemed like such a straight solution for something else that was going on, on the exterior of the building. So that, that's my comment.
Commissioner Keller?
I have a lot. I'll make up for everyone else's. I think the, the, the use of the orange is too much, and seeing it done, it's, there's a lot of it, and it's, it's a pretty intense color. It's there, whether I would feel like saying, hey, you got to repaint this, I'm, I'm kind of over that point of it. I just think that it would have been nice to have a say in that in the beginning, and I understand we don't often ask for that, but this is with the white, it's, garish is kind of probably too strong of a word, but it's a pretty intense area, so I'm not totally thrilled with that, but I'm willing to just overlook that and say, okay, we, it's, what's done is done. I like the monument sign. I think it can remain lit because it's low, it's at the corner. To me, signs like this is wayfinding. It's getting people to the place that they're looking for, and we have a lot of people circling looking for Ikea and all this stuff. So I think this lighted sign being low behind landscaping and stuff, I think it, it just needs to be cleaned up, so I'm fine with that being okay. The taller ones on the big warehouse, where the old square ones were removed and the, the larger ones are put, I'm fine with those in their entirety, other than being lit. Because they are so high and they are so big, on both sides of this building, we have the artistry apartments, and we're always concerned about, I mean, we're concerned about high-rise signs lighting up way across the bay. These things are right across the street from these people, and I live with the public market signs in my window every night, and I've gotten used to it, and they don't bother me, but I think this, we have an opportunity, I think these signs could be here, I just don't think they need to be lit. And I think that is, I know we can dim them and stuff, but I just think that's a little bit too much. And then the sign on the very north end, I don't really, I, the building is just, to me, in my opinion, is oversigned. I think that north end, it doesn't direct people to an entry. It doesn't tell them where they are, they reach that point, you know, at the corner of Sixty-Fifth and, and Shellmount. So I don't think, I think it's just further advertising for it, and I think it's just, again, more visual clutter for the area, so I would prefer not to see that sign on the north end. And, and the entry sign, I think it's helpful. It is lacking that sign on where to go in, and I think having that sign on the street there kind of helps, again, people wayfinding, and this is where you find the office, where you enter, and so I'm, I'm in support of that sign. And that's it.
All right. Any further comments from commission? All right. My comments, I live nearby also. I, I don't feel as though the, the signage being lit is obtrusive to the neighborhood walking by at nighttime. I, I was, like, the, the paint color that you've shown us tonight looks much brighter than what I see currently in the building. The, the current color looks more like an orange-red. It's, it's not as, as vivid as what we see here, and so I actually would prefer the, what's there already compared to what we're seeing, because this is really bright. That said, this, the, the color is consistent with the, the brand of the company, and so that makes sense as to why would we want to have that color on the top of the building. And I think it's actually an improvement from what was there already, and so the, the, the public storage is simply stated there on the building, I think, looks much cleaner. And so I would recommend the approval of the public storage signs as, as recommended here by staff. So that said, this is a public hearing, and we're looking for a motion from the commissioners.
Well, I would move to approve the, the, is this both a conditional use permit and design review?
Oh, it's just design review.
Just design review. I would move to approve design review as proposed.
I would second that.
All right, we have that moved by Commissioner Barretta, seconded by Commissioner Sohane. All right, we have that moved by Commissioner Barretta, seconded by Commissioner Sohane. Can we have a vote, Charlie?
Commissioner Barrera?
Hi.
Commissioner Donaldson?
I'm going to abstain.
Commissioner Keller?
We didn't talk about making any change, didn't make an alternative motion. I, I think the, I can skip on some things, but at this time, without an alternate, I'm going to say no. I would like to see some other changes made to it.
Commissioner Sohane?
Aye.
Commissioner Young is absent. Vice Chair Thompson?
I think I'm going to abstain as well.
And Chair Guerrero?
Aye.
Okay, this is tricky. An abstention does not count towards the vote tally, right? So what we need is a majority of those present and voting.
We need a majority of those present.
Sorry, yes, that's right. A majority of those present, thank you. So we have three ayes, one no, and two abstentions. So that's four.
It doesn't carry.
Why not?
It's three, three, right?
Three majority.
No, an abstention doesn't count as a vote.
But it's, it
I don't believe an abstention counts towards the commissioners who are voting. So, yeah, no, it is, it's a majority of those present and voting.
Hold on.
Well, I think it carries, but the city attorney doesn't agree with me, so I guess we'll have to wait for a ruling. Don't get this out very
I'm also willing to make an alternate motion.
Well, let's wait and see if this has counted or not.
Hold on.
Abstention isn't even in here, what is with that?
Where's the vote? Public comment, here it is. It's not kind of tied, but here we go, according to this. Generally, an affirmative vote of the majority of a quorum of the planning commission shall be necessary to adopt a resolution or make a recommendation on an ordinance unless otherwise required by law.
This is a majority of a quorum. A quorum is four.
Four.
We have three ayes.
But we have more than a quorum.
Well, we have four people present and voting and the two abstentions don't count.
Abstaining from voting, when a roll call vote is being taken and a member declines to vote for any reason, his/her vote shall not be counted in determining the passage of the motion, and such member shall be recorded as having abstained from voting.
Right.
So it doesn't count as a note, but that still only means you have three.
No, you have three out of four. Four people voted and you have three ayes and one no. That's three out of four. That's a majority of a quorum.
I think he's right.
It's a cliffhanger.
Yeah.
Let me see what Google says. Could put it over for next month.
How about this? The glossary of Robert's Rules of Order says, to abstain, to make the decision not to vote. When this happens, the person who decides not to vote is in consent regarding the decision made by the group who did vote.
Okay, then.
Okay, then.
So then it would carry.
Thank you.
Yeah, okay.
Motion approved. This decision may be appealed to the city council within 15 days.
All right.
He is out of here.
I know.
Oh, do you want your sample board or is that our?
That's mine, that's mine.
All right. Well, so at this point, we're moving on. Is there any, anything else you need from us at this point for that item? No?
No, I think we're done.
We have plenty commissioner comments?
I would like to make one.
Okay. Commissioner Barretta?
So this is my last meeting, as you all know, and I'm leaving because I'm, I have to move out of my apartment. My landlord is deciding to sell, so I am moving out and I just want to extend my gratitude to staff and the commissioners for all the dedication and hard work that everybody puts into everything that gets done at this chamber. I know that there is months and years of work from staff that goes into the detailed staff reports that we get. And it's a lot of work to read all of these packets and have a full-time job, so, you know, thank you to staff and to the commission for all of your dedication. I think Emeryville is extremely lucky to have all of you. And just last thing, you know, I've been to a bunch of other planning commission meetings in other cities and I got to say that I think it's really impressive that there's lots of laughter in this chamber. So we are very, I feel really fortunate to have participated in the commission, so thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Barretta. I think that there's some comments from commissioners and I'll start with Commissioner Keller.
Most definitely. We want to really expect our appreciation for all your hard work and I'm really, really disappointed. I got you to stay another term and I was hoping it was going to be a full term. But you're, you're definitely an asset to any community you're in and you're really going to be missed and I'm going to look for a place for you to buy in Emeryville.
All right, the search continues. I would agree, just to say, you know, you'll definitely be missed and it was great to work alongside you.
Commissioner Donaldson?
Ditto. We're going to miss you, definitely.
Do you have anything to add there?
Thank you for all your efforts. I've been, like, our time overlap was pretty small, but I really appreciate all the meaningful comments that you make to make Emeryville a better place. Thanks.
I also want to close by saying, Commissioner Barretta, it's been an honor working with you. We're not saying goodbye yet because we're going to say goodbye next, next month, but I always appreciate your feedback and the way that you really want the community, to hear feedback from the community. And that's consistently something that you, you give feedback about and I enjoy that about working with you. And I agree with Commissioner Keller, wherever you go, you're going to be an asset to that community.
Thank you.
And so we're losing a really important person here for our, our community. So that said, I just want to, this isn't goodbye yet because we're going to see you next time, right?
Yes, that's right.
Okay, good. So I'll save my roast for next time. All right. So that's, I'm going to go ahead and adjourn them.
I have another comment.
Great. Commissioner Keller?
Just a reminder to Charlie, I am going to be in the other hemisphere in February, so I will not be at the February meeting.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
You're really going to go there?
Yes, I'm going to support the economy, even if it is burning.
Yeah, and if it's, this is the moment to say that, then I'll not be attending the next meeting as I'll be in India.
Oh, so two absences and Commissioner Barrera, let me just say, according to the city's municipal code, a commissioner who's, well, I think it's their term has expired. I'm not sure about if you move out of town, but you can continue to serve until your replacement is appointed. But anyway, having said that, that means we're down to four for the February meeting. So nobody can be sick or go out of town. Other than Commissioner Keller and Sohane.
Well, if I am needed and it's possible for me to participate in that meeting, I would be happy to, to stay and
Okay, thank you. We will double check what the code says about that.
Thank you.
Great, you're not out of here yet.
We're going to hang on to you as long as we can.
We're not going to let you leave.
Okay, that said, I'm going to go ahead and adjourn this meeting at 9:49.